It is 1:30, and so I am going to call this meeting to order. This May 21st, 2020 Electronic Regular Meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. I will take a roll call so that we know that everybody can be seen and heard. Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Cohen. Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Here.
Mr. Frisch.
I'm here.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Merritt.
Here.
Ms. Omage.
Here.
Ms. Pikarski.
Here.
Ms. Seismar Heizer.
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan.
I'm here.
Ms. Boateng. Okay. Is Ms. Boateng here? Okay. So, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by your forechair. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
So, I'm going to call Ms. Boateng again to see if she has signed on. Yeah. So, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, can I ask you to read the recognition for School Nurses Day? School Nurse Day?
Oh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you will have to give me a moment, please. If somebody else has it up, it might be quicker. I'm so sorry.
Um, I'll have it up.
All right.
Ms. Seismar Heizer, would you please do that?
Sure. School Nurse Day, May 26, 2020. School Nurse Day was established in 1972 to foster a better understanding of the role of school nurses in the educational setting. This annual event recognizes the contributions that school nurses make every day to improve the health and success of our nation's children. This year's theme, "School Nurses: Better Health, Better Learning," reflects the significant roles that school nurses have in healthcare in their communities, as well as in modeling health and resiliency. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the health and well-being of students and is an integral part of a quality school health program. School help nurses promote health, safety, prevention, and wellness, intervene with actual and potential health problems, and provide case management services. They are an invaluable bridge connecting healthcare providers, public health, and families. The school system works closely with Fairfax County Health Department to provide quality services to the children of Fairfax County Public Schools and recognized May 26th as School Nurse Day in Fairfax County.
Thank you, Ms. Seismar Heizer. I'm going to ask, Mr. Frisch, could you read the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day?
All right, here we go. Thank you very much. National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, May 7, 2020. The well-being of children has a profound, immediate, and lasting impact on our community. Nationally, over one in five children and youth have mental health issues, and only half of children and youth with behavioral health issues receive treatment. Fairfax County Public Schools is a partner with county agencies and nonprofit organizations in the Healthy Minds Fairfax Initiative to increase awareness of signs of mental distress and to address barriers to accessing services through the coordination of prevention, early intervention, and treatment services. The school board is pleased to recognize May 7, 2020 is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Fairfax County. This day is observed each year to raise awareness about the importance of children's mental health and how vital positive mental health is to a child's development. This is an opportunity to celebrate the work of our school division to increase awareness of the connection between mental health and social, emotional, and psychological well-being. Our students are contributing to this increased awareness through their work on the Student Advisory Council and through participation in wellness clubs and activities in their schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frisch. I now call on Ms. Cohen for the Gun Violence Awareness Month recognition.
Sorry, started reading it without my mic on. Thank you very much. The first Friday in June is recognized as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, also known as Wear Orange Day. It was first organized by high school students in Chicago to memorialize the 2013 death of their friend and gun violence victim, 15-year-old Padia Pendleton. After her death, they asked us to stand up, speak out, and wear orange, which was her favorite color, to raise awareness about gun violence. That simple call to action has grown into a national movement. In the U.S., 3,062 children and teens die by guns every year. Firearms are the leading cause of death among children and teens in the United States. One tragic example in our own community was in November 2015, Edison High School graduate Joe Bose was a victim of a senseless and random act of gun violence in Norfolk, Virginia, where he attended Hampton University. Every student deserves to learn and grow in an environment that is safe. Sadly, the threat of violence for students, including gun violence, has grown across the country. National Gun Violence Awareness Day is used to raise awareness of the issue and the importance of preventing and eliminating gun violence in schools and communities. Millions are coming together to fight for an end to gun violence in America. The school board recognizes the effort to bring more awareness and remembrance to the victims of gun violence by those wearing orange on June 5th for National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. I now call on Ms. Tolan for the Fairfax County Public Schools ECHO Schools recognition.
Thank you, and I think we have a couple of slides to go with this, if I'm not mistaken. The FCPS Get to Green Program began in 2009 to support student-led and school-based environmental stewardship in our schools. It has grown to have support from most departments across FCPS, including Food and Nutrition, Facilities and Maintenance, Design and Construction, and Instructional Services. Much of this work is carried out through Get to Green's Ignite partnership with the National Wildlife Federation. The National Wildlife Federation's ECHO Schools USA program provides a framework for student-led action on environmental topics or pathways. Students at 136 of our ECHO schools in FCPS have conducted audits and developed action plans to improve the sustainability of their schools on such environmental pathways as consumption and waste, energy, schoolyard habitat, and sustainable food. Today, I am proud to have the school board recognize the teachers, staff, and students in FCPS schools who have earned awards from ECHO schools by taking action to improve the sustainability of their schools and communities while developing portrait of a graduate skills. We are pleased to recognize the schools that have earned green flags and silver awards for addressing multiple sustainability pathways through ECHO schools. The following three schools have earned permanent green flag status. To earn a permanent green flag, schools must earn four green flags, one every two years. They must have embedded sustainability into their culture and have an international component to their work. Only three schools in our entire country have earned this distinction, and we are so proud that all three of them are in FCPS. Congratulations to Centerville Elementary, Flintville Elementary, and Lanier Middle School. The following 14 schools have earned at least one green flag for addressing three or more environmental pathways. Belvedere Elementary, Carson Middle, Chesterbrook Elementary, Churchill Road Elementary, Daniels Run Elementary, Franklin Sherman Elementary, Frost Middle School, Haycock Elementary, Lake Anne Elementary, Longfellow Middle, Marshall High School, Providence Elementary, Riverside Elementary, Rocky Run Middle School. I want to throw in there Riverside is our latest one. We will hopefully hear this week about their green flag. Congratulations. The following 14 schools are silver award winners for addressing two environmental pathways. Beechtree Elementary, Claremont Elementary, Colton Run Elementary, Cooper Middle School, Drainsville Elementary, Eco View Elementary, Hallen Meadows Elementary, Lee's Corner Elementary, McNair Elementary, Mountain View High School, Robinson Secondary, Spring Hill Elementary, Harasett Elementary, and Westfield High School. In addition, we have 22 Bronze Level schools. I'd like to put a shout out to staff members Allison Kohane, our coordinator for Get to Green and Facilities and Maintenance, and Donna Volkman, our educational specialist and instructional services, for the incredible support that they have coordinated for these amazing schools. Thank you, Op, for your incredible work on sustainability.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I now call on Ms. Omage for the recognition of the FCPS High School Voter Registration Challenge.
Thank you. The FCPS High School Voter Registration Challenge was created to encourage students to register to vote. Encouraging voter registration and providing registration opportunities was a vigorous endeavor supported by high school social studies teachers, the League of Women Voters of the Fairfax area, the Fairfax County Board of Elections, the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, and the Instructional Services Social Studies Team. Many voter registration events were held in schools, and these events provided practical opportunities for students to make real-life connections between their coursework and adult civic responsibility. Voting is a cornerstone of our democracy, and providing access to voter registration prepares our students to exercise their voting rights. Students who are registered voters will be able to participate in decision-making at the local, state, and federal level. Tonight, as part of the FCPS High School Voter Registration Challenge, we recognize teachers, staff, and organizations who supported these voter registration efforts. Most importantly, we are pleased to recognize the schools that registered at least 50% of eligible members of their senior class. The following schools are the 2019-2020 FCPS Challenge winners. Again, 50% or more of eligible seniors. Annandale High School, Chantilly High School, Fairfax High School, Falls Church, Hayfield, Herndon, Lake Braddock, Lee, Marshall, McLean, Mount Vernon, Robinson, TJ, West Potomac, West Springfield, and Westfield. So, congratulations to a majority of our high schools, and we look forward to having more of these efforts in our other schools.
Thank you very much, Ms. Omage. Now we come to citizen participation. Today, four citizens have signed up to address the board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us today. Our first speaker is Kimberly Adams, followed by Kelly L. Yakobi.
Good afternoon, Chairman Corbett Sanders, School Board members, Dr. Braibran, and leadership team. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am proud to represent the members of the Fairfax Education Association. The FEA would like to thank the FCPS administration for recognizing that their partners in the FEA are willing to help with the discussions on the return to schools. And then in addition to our inclusion on the Superintendent's Reopening of Schools Task Force, the FEA has begun to form our own internal task force, and the Virginia Education Association is well underway with their plans to inform the discussions at the state level with Virginia Department of Education. We want to reinforce the importance of including the educator and support employee voices at the table as you make decisions on what will likely be the most challenging return to schools that we have ever experienced. FEA continues to forge strong partnerships with each school board member as well. Our members have been participating in virtual town halls with school board members, and we look forward to hosting more of those in the coming weeks. This provides an informative question-and-answer session for both our members as well as your board. We also thank the superintendent and directors of special education, joined FEA members in a town hall session as well. Continuing to provide as much information as possible to your employees remains our focus. As we finish this school year, FEA members are contacting their union about many things. One that stands out the most is a continued concern for their own mental health and that of their colleagues. This month, as we recognize Child Mental Health Day, we are reminded to take extra special care of our educators as well. We appreciate the inclusion of additional mental health supports in the budget you'll pass today. We want to publicly thank the Elementary Principals Association for their understanding and agreement that at this time, a request for an increase in compensation is just not feasible until revenues return to the county and state. We understand this and appreciate the difficult decision on deferring an increase that is both needed and well-deserved. Finally, we look forward to celebrating our graduates in whatever virtual way is possible, and we know that those students will find their paths forward and continue to lead us toward greatness in our future. Thank you for your time, and please stay safe and healthy, everyone.
Thank you, Kimberly. Kelly L. Yakobi.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm a parent of two elementary schoolers, and I'm deeply concerned about FCPS's choice to give its students unmonitored and uncontrolled Google Hangout Chat access, GChat, in the G Suite online learning platform. I've used GChat to collaborate with coworkers in a fast-paced office environment, but I was shocked when I found out what elementary students are using it to do. Inside my child's live online class in Blackboard, the Blackboard chat is now monitored. But when I started hearing dings, I realized that dozens of his peers were chatting in the school email Google browser that they use to log on. Private and group conversations were pinging and popping up at the bottom of the browser during class and around the clock. The teachers can't see, and my son couldn't stop them. So, my child, who receives phonics intervention, tried to fit in on the chat, but he misstelled words and couldn't keep up. Later, as he spoke to answer a question in class, the chats came in, in all caps. "You can't talk. Shut up. His IQ is negative 1 trillion." Yup, true. This was weeks ago. Just yesterday, when I simply corrected a spelling word on his work, my son ran to my bed, hid under the covers, and cried, saying, "I'm so stupid," and he wouldn't get up. Now, my son is one of 185,000 in FCPS, and he's only in elementary school. Imagine with me the extent of inappropriate and unsafe behavior that FCPS has created the perfect platform for. Imagine with me the number of stressed, busy parents and teachers that aren't even aware this is happening on GChat. I reached out to the school teachers and administrators. They're expected to stop the cyberbullying. But to this day, they can't see the chats or shut them off, and they had to ask me for cumbersome screenshots and timestamps to even be able to request chat transcripts from IT, who provided them days later. Even after all this, all the school could say was, "Tell him to mute it. Tell him not to look at it." That is not good enough. I think I speak for all parents when I say, "I don't have time to read through chats, take screenshots, or even demand a mic at a school board meeting. It's not my job." We trusted FCPS and its $3 billion annual budget to get this right and to ensure our kids are able to learn in a safe environment online. Shutting off GChat is not that hard. FCPS knew and knows it shouldn't have been on in the first place. Please fix it. It's not our job to solve this. It's yours. Thank you.
Thank you. David Walrod.
Good afternoon, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Good afternoon, Chairman Corbett Sanders, Dr. Braibran, and members of the board. My name is David Walrod. I'm a math and special education teacher at Lake Braddock Secondary School and a doctoral student at George Mason University. I'm speaking today as a member of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. Through the Special Education Task Force that I chair, we recently completed a survey on the Office of School Support. You should have received our results earlier from our president, Tina Williams. The results of the survey may be useful for the board during this meeting, both in determining budget priorities and in understanding why. According to the separation report being discussed today, instructional staff make up a disproportionately large number of FCPS staff who have left this year. While another member will share the quantitative data collected, I'd like to highlight our qualitative findings. This survey, which was designed to receive feedback regarding the proposal to add a large number of positions to OSS, received 143 responses in less than 24 hours. 24 of these responses came from Project Momentum Schools. The survey was primarily quantitative with one qualitative question. Do you have any comments you'd like to share with the school board about the Office of School Support? 68 respondents chose to provide comments. While the comments were numerous, three emergent themes became apparent. Special education teachers feel stressed about their current workloads. Support at the school level would be more useful than the district level. There are questions about the actual role of OSS. While not included with the report, many respondents showed clear anger and frustration, including the idea that OSS served to add to their paperwork expectation, but did not make anything easier. With my remaining time, I'd like to highlight a couple of the responses we got. I agree with the comment Dr. Braibran made in one of his videos that having a good mentor for new teachers in the building is meaningful. This is my first year at a Project Momentum School, and I relied on another teacher, not the OSS. We need to focus on the staff that directly interact with students and parents on a daily basis. As terrific a resource as OSS is, we need more special education personnel in every school. Our caseloads are too large, and our students' needs are too diverse for us to effectively service. What is OSS? OSS support helps guide us as to what we should be doing. Increased personnel within each school helps us to actually do it. Chairman Corbett Sanders, Dr. Braibran, and members of the board, thank you for your time today and for the work you are doing for our students.
Cheryl Zimmerman.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman, Dr. Braibran, and members of the board. My name is Cheryl Zimmerman. I am a special education teacher here in Fairfax County. I have been in the county for almost eight years. I spent two years as an instructional assistant and currently am at Sleepy Hollow Elementary School in an enhanced autism classroom where I have been working for the past six years. I was also a Fairfax County Public Schools student from kindergarten until I graduated high school, and now my children also attend Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm speaking today as a member of FCFT regarding the survey that David Walrod referenced and spoke on. Some of the key findings from our survey, which are demonstrated in the document and graphs that you should have received, some of our key findings were 88.5% of the respondents believed that OSS had little or no impact on their teaching practice or student learning during the 2019-2020 school year. 77.4% of the respondents reported that they did not start their career in FCPS with a provisional license or did not receive support from OSS while holding a provisional license. Of the teachers who reported starting their career in FCPS with a provisional license, 61.9% reported receiving no support from OSS. 74.5% of our respondents report that they do not feel supported by special education leadership in the central office. That's noted on graph seven. 66.4% of the respondents report that they have not received support from an OSS special education resource teacher during the 2019-2020 school year. 96% of the respondents report that they received support from other teachers or staff members at their base school when writing IEPs instead of reaching out to OSS special education resource teachers or procedural support liaisons. 78.3% of the respondents report that they seek support from other teachers or staff at their school when they have questions about programs instead of reaching out to OSS or other special education resource teachers or specialists such as a procedural support liaison. 96.4% of our respondents stated they would prefer the school board pass a budget to hire school-based special education educators instead of special education resource teachers and special education support positions based in central office, which is currently being proposed, because they believe it would have the highest impact on student learning. Based on our findings, teachers feel what is currently being proposed, increasing special education support based in central office and special education resource teachers, is not the most impactful on students or teachers. Better to use this funding to hire at school levels so that A and B students and teachers can be directly supported.
Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and for the work that you're doing for our students.
Thank you very much. I'm going to see if Ms. Boateng has joined us. She does not. So, I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion on the approved, on the budget. Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, good afternoon. So, it is my pleasure as the budget chair this year that I move the school board to adopt the fiscal year 2021 approved budget as detailed in the advertised budget modified by the adjustments included in today's agenda item.
Is there a second? Second by Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, thank you. I just want to begin by expressing my gratitude to my school board colleagues. This has been quite a journey, especially with a brand-new board that started in January. We did not anticipate the tragic impact of COVID and the need to completely pull out a lot of essential funding that we had looked forward to. Most importantly, we were looking forward to partnering with the county or supervisors and ensuring very important employee compensation increases for our hard-working FCPS employees. And regrettably, as we've seen with the loss of both state and local funds, that is a massive change in the budget we present here today. But we will be presenting later on in today's meeting several follow-on motions, one of which will talk about our tremendous commitment to our employees. Secondly, I do want to also express my gratitude to Dr. Braibran and the leadership team for their hard work in developing this over the past year. And most importantly, our CFO, Lee Burden, and her deputy, Alice Whittington. Both of them have been instrumental, along with our chief operating officer, Marty Smith, working very long hours alongside myself and the most amazing partner I could ask for, which is Riccardi Anderson. In terms of the budget before you, I look forward to not only discussing the amendments that are being proposed by several colleagues, but then coming back to the main motion and talking about how this board has worked very hard to make sure that our most important commitments are still protected. And that is our current employee that is ensuring that all of our students who have been impacted by the closure of our schools through COVID, as well as our teachers and staff who have worked so hard in our schools to try and meet the needs of our students through distance learning. through distance learning. What can we do as a school division to rise the occasion of the COVID challenges to ensure that Fairfax County continues to deliver one of the best public school educations that people can find here in our nation? So with that, I pass it along to, again, my amazing partner in all this, Dr. Riccardi Anderson, and look forward to speaking to the main motion once we do touch on the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So I will call on Dr. Anderson to speak to her second.
Good afternoon, all. I have to say, I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, and I don't want to take too much time, because I do know we have quite a bit ahead of us. But I do want to say thank you to all of the persons that she's named and also to our colleagues, because this is our second go-round with our budget, because we did go through this process in February, and we have had to really shift priorities and postpone certain things in order to deal with the new reality of our budget climate. So thank you again to my colleagues. Thank you to Ms. Burden, Mr. Smith, Dr. Braybrand, and the entire team that has worked really tremendous numbers of hours to make this happen in a very truncated period of time. And so with that, I will return it back to our chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Anderson. I don't see any other board members who want to speak to the main motion quite yet, so I am going to call on you for an amendment.
Thank you. Okay. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to utilize funds rescinded from the superintendent's proposed FY21 budget, i.e. the elementary school principal parity pay at .4 million dollars, to outline a plan to place additional counselors in the highest need schools in the FY2021-2022 school year.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Cohen. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your amendment?
I would, thank you. As we all know, the realities in which we have faced, that we have found ourselves have had direct consequences and impact on our students. We know that their opportunity to return to learning is going to be impacted, but what has taken place in these times? We already had very stretched resources to begin with, and at this point, we need to be able to address the additional challenges that our students are going to be presented with when they return to school. And so in that light, I wanted, along with a number of my colleagues, to ensure that we had additional resources and supports available. So we are, I am hoping that our board will agree to direct our superintendent to increase our counselors to meet the needs of our students. We know they will be numerous, but at least this begins to, this begins to chip away at some of the challenges that would be presented regarding as far as resources are concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
I would, thank you. I'm very pleased to be able to second this amendment. It's definitely the brainchild of Dr. Anderson, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Omeish, and myself of hoping that we could find and identify areas in the budget where we would be able to redirect some direct services for our students, emotional and mental health. As Dr. Anderson said, our counselor ratios are way too high. We have way too many students per counselor, and the workload means that our counselors don't get a lot of time individually with our students in our schools. So we're very excited to support this amendment. We hope that you all will consider supporting it. And again, as Dr. Anderson said, it's the beginning of a broader conversation that we need to have about the real investment that needs to go into our kids' emotional and mental health. And we're excited to see Dr. Braybrand incorporating more mental health supports into his COVID budget. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cohen. Do any other board members have anything to say on this before we call for the vote? Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, I just, I wanted to reinforce that for many years prior to even the COVID crisis, we have known that the state does not provide us with adequate funding, nor the federal government, to cover the essential needs of truly educating the whole child. And so I do want to thank my colleagues for bringing forward this use of redeploying proposals within the superintendent's recommended budget to increase our counselors. This is a small step in the right direction, but I do hope what this signals to our principals, our teachers and staff in our school buildings, that we are very mindful that when we reopen our buildings in the fall, we will need these type of supports for our students, and we hope this is a positive step in that light.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you very much. Just very briefly, I wanted to pick up on what Ms. McLaughlin left off in recognizing that our budget is underfunded from the state and federal government in terms of ratios for counselors, and we appreciate the efforts that our representatives have made to try to increase that funding. But this is one of the reasons I had an additional follow-on motion that I'm going to try to bring to a forum topic or other ways regarding having to come up with innovative ways to provide mental well-being and regular check-ins. And I appreciate Corbett Sanders joining me on that one. And I think this is a great start to redeploy some funds to get counselors, but I just wanted to be mindful that going forward, given the mental health needs of COVID, that we need to be very creative and innovative in finding other ways to support our student mental well-being. So I support this wholeheartedly, and I'm thankful to my colleagues for bringing this forward, but it is just to me a start. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. I do not see any other board members wanting to speak to this, so I would like to just briefly speak to this. It's, just so the public knows, this is in addition to, and Dr. Braybrand or perhaps Ms. McLaughlin can clarify this, but in the budget, we are already adding 20 additional counselors and additional social workers and school psychologists. This is to supplement it because we know, as Ms. Seismarheiser mentioned, that the issues of COVID-19 have called attention to the needs of our students. But I want to make it clear that this is a budget that although we're doing it and we're having to address many shortfalls because of COVID-19, our investment in mental health and well-being for our students goes beyond COVID-19. And as Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, our state funding formulas are woefully under where they should be for having those supports in our schools. The state did make changes in those formulas this past year, but then had to put them on pause as a result of, as a result of the budget shortfalls for the state. And so what this signals to our families is that mental health and well-being is a top priority for this board, for all of our students, and we are going to invest in this. And I guess we'll have to wait for the state and the federal government to catch up with us. So with that, I am happy to support this amendment. And I will call for the vote. Let me reread it so that people know what they're voting on. That the school board directs the superintendent to utilize funds rescinded from the superintendent's proposed fiscal year '21 budget, i.e. ES parity, elementary school parity pay of $400 million, or $400,000, to outline a plan to place additional counselors in the highest need schools in the school year 2021 to 2022. All those in favor? I have Dr. Anderson, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Maron, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Kees-Gamara, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. I believe that's all of us, but.
That is unanimous.
That is unanimous. Thank you. So that motion carries. I now call on Ms. Omeish for an amendment.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I move that the school board direct the super, excuse me, sorry. Okay. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to utilize funds rescinded from the superintendent's proposed FY21 budget in the amount of .3 million for the Office of School Supports to include in the 2021-2022 school year ESOL in elementary and middle schools, K through 8, for instruction and targeted supports that will address gaps in learning based on the highest need students.
Is there a second for your amendment, Ms. Omeish?
I'll second it, Karen. It's rational, I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Omeish, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you. Nearly a third of our student population, 29%, are English language learners, and the data shows us that gaps in reading and arithmetic significantly hinder student abilities in years following and consistently reflect themselves in achievement gaps that we know to be a challenge. I have heard from our English language learning staff, I have heard from MSAOC, and all sorts of staff working in these areas, that English language learners tend to be particularly affected, and the data reflects this as well. In our current budget plans, we do not offer English language learning supports to K through 8, particularly not in the summer, and this amendment will allow for instructional supports for all K through 8 English language learners in more targeted efforts for those in Level 1 and 2 during distance learning. As we look at the transitions, many English language learners have not been able to maintain their abilities, and being at home has led to exposure such that ESOL students have regressed. This is a frequently underfunded area with class sizes larger than we would hope, and providing students with this instructional package with monies that have already been found but previously rescinded from our budget will cover this gap, address an ever-exacerbating ELL need, and proactively plan against achievement gaps that already exist and will only continue.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Ms. Seismarheiser, would you like to speak to your second?
Just, just briefly, I would. One of my, one of my passions is really making sure that all of our students have the supports and resources they need and working to not only close gaps, but make sure the students are seen for all of their strengths. And I feel like, given what's going on with COVID, even before, we need to close gaps and we need to provide supports to make sure our students have people and support in place so they can then find their strengths. And I believe this is one of the ways for a very vulnerable population for whom distance learning is more difficult, to be able to close those gaps and have the ability to find what their strengths are. And I just want to say very personally, as a former ESOL student who didn't speak any English when I started school, I do understand how it can affect both the mental well-being as well as the education of our ESOL students. So I'm happy to second this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. McLaughlin? Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, sorry. By the time we turn off our cameras and our video, and audio, it takes a minute. Two things. One, I absolutely support the need here, but I have just two questions, quick ones. Is Dr. Braybrand on the line?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Dr. Braybrand, I just wanted to ask, with the amended language that's in front of us, does this help your operational efforts to serve our ESOL students? Or do you have any concerns with the way the proposal is presented today?
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for the opportunity to provide feedback. Listen, we know EL kids are going to be one of those targeted groups of kids that we're really going to need to focus attention on. We've wanted to for some time to do some additional revisions to our ESOL staff, particularly in elementary, but also middle. This is, this is a step in the right direction. We're not going to be able, obviously, to have the full staffing funding that we'd like, but it's certainly a step in the right direction, and we can support this, we can support this motion as presented.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Dr. Braybrand. Chairman Corbett Sanders, I just have one housekeeping concern. It relates to this amendment and the one we just voted on. We're talking about the fiscal year '21, but both the prior amendment and this amendment say school year '21-22, which is actually another year from now. So we will need to correct that language to say school year 2021, if in fact, we're talking about the fiscal '21 budget. So I just want to make sure those corrections are made. Otherwise, thank you to my colleagues who are supporting this. I certainly look forward to supporting it as well.
So thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for pointing that out. We will correct that before we vote on this one, and I will ask my colleagues to do a second vote on the one that we just passed, just so that we have the corrected language with everybody approving it. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. I will be voting against this amendment, even though I've been pushing to increase the number of our mental health professionals for the last couple of years, both to prior boards and this board. We, just for the public's information, we received this amendment with corrected costs at 12:14 in the morning this morning, and we've had no opportunity to discuss it as a board. I don't have, or to discuss it even with Dr. Braybrand, other than right this second. I don't know where this requested $1.4 million is coming from in our budget.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen. This is a slightly different one. This is .3, so it's $300,000 for L support.
Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry. I will be voting to support this. I am so sorry. I meant Ms. Omeish's other amendment that she sent us this morning. So my sincere apologies. I will definitely be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Yes. I do, I would like specifically, as many of you may know, I have, or you may not know, I have worked really hard over the past several years to get English language supports to our students, starting with pilot programs years ago in Lee High School and what is now Justice High School. I, I, well, I want to do this, it took over two years to get these pilot programs up and running, where we looked at school divisions outside of Northern Virginia and talked about what we needed to do to allow input into our high schools and change broad curriculum as a result of this. So, Dr. Braybrand, I would like to specifically ask, while I am all for supports like this, will these be going to the high school? Will these be going to the middle school? Where will they be going? I don't have a good understanding, this point of what these positions are and where they'll be going. I see they're going in K through 8, but in what capacity? And would it be better spent in the high schools? Because I'm still hearing of deficiencies in our high school programming.
Well, the, thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. The reality is, we need additional EL staffing across the board, and as you said, you've been a leader the last few budgets. You've brought amendments, increased our staffing. Rich Polio has been working with me and the leadership team to push for additional ESOL staffing. And what I would have to do if you all pass this amendment is to come back with Dr. Presidio and share as informationally how we would deploy that $300,000 in EL staffing across the division. But we have had discussions with the leadership team about the need for additional staffing. I don't have the details of deployment here for today, but I could provide them in the upcoming weeks.
All right. I think that's important, and I think what we, while I may be inclined to support this at this point in time, what I think is we need is a comprehensive plan, and I hope that comes from instructional support and who, you know, and the Equity Office, because we have been talking about this for years, and this is something that we absolutely need to take time to develop. What is going to, what's this going to look like in the K through 8 system? And what are the deficiencies in the, in the, in the high school? Because we have less time to impact the meaningful learning for those kids. when they come to us in their high school, in those high school years. So I look forward to the plan. And at some point, I am hoping we have something much more comprehensive rather than just $300,000 on this. Thank you.
Glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dernak-Kofax. And before I call for the vote, actually, I have Ms. Tolan. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, hi. Just very quickly. In my discussions with principals and the schools that I'm working with, I've been just asking for anecdotal information on attendance levels in the distance learning program. And I'm happy to say I'm getting very high numbers. And, but I'm also hearing heroic stories about the lengths that our staff in our schools have gone to to reach out to students that do not speak English and families that do not speak English. And so I fully appreciate the need for this type of support for these families and students. But I do want to second, you know, what Ms. Kofax had to say in that I really hope that we can engage our school-based principals and staff in really coming up with a comprehensive look at, this is a small amount of money, but, you know, where it's going to be best spent. Thank you. And thanks to our schools for doing this incredible work.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And before I call for the vote, I do want to comment on this motion. And my comment is regarding the first, thank you, Ms. Omeche, for bringing this motion forward. And as people have said, $300,000 is not a significant amount of money. And we would, we will need to invest more in the remediation and mitigation of the effects of COVID-19. However, Dr. Brabrand, this $300,000, when I spoke with Ms. Omeche, she talked about having some summers program, some programming this summer to support these students so that we can get them back ready to, ready to learn when the school year starts. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, I, as I said, I am not ready to say definitively whether we would use these $300,000 in additional funds for the summer or for return to school. I'd really want to spend a little bit more time with Dr. Presidio and Dr. Polio. I do want you guys to know, though, something that several of you have said. To really take a deep dive of redoing our EL staffing, and that was a problem of practice that our leadership team was looking at this year, is a million-dollar issue, not a $100,000 issue. So I just want to set expectations for the board and the public that our EL staffing, to get the results that we want, is going to need to have a comprehensive relook. And we can bring you that. But it is far greater than the $300,000 that we're presenting today. It's certainly a signal, if you wish to approve it, that the board cares about this issue. But the amount to do it in the way that we believe needs to be done is a million-dollar or a sweat of million dollars of investments. And we'll bring you and can bring you that additional detail in the coming months as we look at the budget for next year or we look at quarterly dispensation from the county that may be able to let us do some additional investments. Thank you.
I would say distribution from the county, yes. Dr. Brabrand, one of the requests that I have is that Ms. Omeche raised this because of her concerns about the impact of the students not necessarily having the access and connectivity that they need during this period of time. So I will urge you that when you come to us on June 17th with our return, with your initial thoughts or your second-stage thoughts on the return-to-school plan, if you could please address this specifically in that, I know you're already thinking about that, but I just think that you know from this board and from the conversation we've just had how important this issue is to us.
Glad to do so.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brabrand. I now have Mr. Frisch's hand up. Mr. Frisch?
Sorry to jump in. But I support this, this motion, this amendment. And it's good to hear that people think it's not enough money. I think Ms. Omeche would probably agree that we do need more money here. So let's try and make, you know, an even larger investment as we review the budget quarterly and at the end of the year. I think there's no time like the present to get started on this important work, though, because, as has been said, these supports are extremely important, especially with communities that are already suffering from significant gaps in what we're able to offer. So 110% behind this. Thank you, Ms. Omeche, for bringing it.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Frisch. And with that, I will call for the vote. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to utilize funds rescinded from the superintendent's proposed fiscal year '21 budget in the amount of $300,000 for the Office of School Supports to include in the 2020 to 2021 school year ESOL in elementary and middle schools K through eight for instruction and targeted supports that will address gaps in learning based on the highest need students. All those in favor? So I have Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Tolan, Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Maron, Ms. Bukarsky, Ms. Omeche, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed? I don't believe there are any opposed. So the motion, that is unanimous. The motion carries. I'm going to go back for a housekeeping measure, and I hate to do this to people. But if we could, with the corrected date on the previous amendment, and I need to bring it up. I apologize, folks. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to utilize funds rescinded from the superintendent's proposed fiscal year '21 budget, i.e., elementary school parity pay of $400,000 to outline a plan to place additional counselors in the highest need schools in the school year 2020 to 2021. All those in favor? Dr. Anderson, Ms. Bukarsky, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Maron, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Cohen, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, Ms. Omeche, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That is unanimous. The motion carries. I will now, I will now read the main budget motion. I move that the school board adopt the fiscal year 2021 approved budget as detailed in the fiscal year '21, 2021 advertised budget modified by the adjustments included in the agenda item and as amended by this board. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, this is the Budget Chair. No one's spoken to the budget this year yet. All we did was, Dr. Anderson and I presented it. Then we went straight into the amendments. Now it's been amended. Now everybody speaks to the main motion of the budget.
Well, actually, I asked about that earlier, if people wanted to speak to the original motion, but if, and nobody showed a wish to, but we can go ahead and do that before we call the vote, Ms. McLaughlin. Would anybody like to speak to the main motion now? Ms. Maron?
Yes, hi. Yes, I just want to briefly say that I am really, I'm really proud of the way that we've pivoted. I think this budget reflects what we've heard from the community, you know, focusing still on achievement and ensuring our kids learn what they need, you know, to be out in the world, but especially now, the social-emotional supports. So I'm just, I'm really pleased at the hard work that we've done. And thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. And seeing nobody else's hands up, I will now call for the vote on the main motion. I move that the school board adopts the fiscal year 2021 approved budget as detailed in the fiscal year 2021 advertised budget modified by the adjustments included in the agenda item and as amended by this board. All those in favor? I have Ms. Keys-Gamara, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Omeche, Ms. Bukarsky, Ms. Cohen, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Maron, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That is unanimous. The motion carries. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seven follow-on motions have been submitted by board members and have been posted to Board Doc over the last several days. I would ask that the board consider the opportunity that rather than vote individually on each one, that we will, that I present this motion as a created omnibus motion, where we will discuss and consider the seven of them together and then take a singular vote. That is my motion on the table.
And do we have a second on that? Seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, briefly. I do want to first let the public know, as well as my colleagues, that this first motion is like a housekeeping motion. It's just simply asking for the board's approval by parliamentary procedure that we would collectively bring seven of these follow-on motions together. We will discuss and consider them together and then go for a omnibus vote, rather than to have seven separate motions of discussion and seven separate votes. So I know that I shared this procedural recommendation to all of you. You don't need to speak to this first motion, which is just simply to say you agreed to collectively put them together. But you are all certainly welcome to be able to speak to this first motion about the procedural. What will happen next is if this passes, each of the seven follow-on motions will be publicly presented by their sponsors. And then the full board can discuss any and all of these seven follow-on motions before we take the collective vote on the seven of them together as an omnibus. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your second? We're going to wait one moment. Dr. Anderson is having a connection challenge. Welcome back, Dr. Anderson. Would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. I apologize. It just, I just died, truly, from my machine. So I apologize for that. I do want to echo what Ms. McLaughlin started to share, at least the parts that I heard. This is just a procedural opportunity for us to just streamline our work a little bit. We will still have full discussion regarding what is being presented. And so I second that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Do I have any board members who would like to discuss the omnibus approach? Yes, Ms. Seismarheiser?
I just wanted to briefly say that while I'm in agreement with this approach at this moment, I just wanted to thank our two Budget Chairs for working with me on this process to make sure we can still speak to our motions while also streamlining our work. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that opportunity to work on this procedural change to make it one that works for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Anybody else? No. And with that, I will call for the vote. I move that the board allow the seven follow-on motions as an omnibus and with one vote. All those in favor? I have Dr. Anderson, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarsky, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Omeche, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Maron, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, Ms. Seismarheiser, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you. I will call on each maker and seconder to read and speak to their motion. After each follow-on is read, there will be an opportunity for board members to speak to any or all of the motions. I will then call for the vote on the omnibus motion. The first follow-on motion is a motion of Ms. Dernak-Kofax and myself. So, Ms. Dernak-Kofax, why don't you go ahead and read that?
I move that the school board direct the superintendent to provide a plan for ensuring greater transparency and accountability in our budget process to effectively meet operational expectations defined in our governance manual.
And I will be seconding that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Dernak-Kofax, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, bri, just briefly. I think there has, first of all, I want to say this. I do believe our budget is quite transparent, but it's quite large and it's difficult to manage sometimes. So one thing that we have tried to do in the past years is look at the budget and align it with our strategic plan. This has been something that Dr. Brabrand has been doing. I feel that there can be greater ability to do that, bringing back the program budget, making certain that every, there are other tools that we have used in the past to allow even greater transparency, if you will, or a perceived greater transparency, because I do believe every school board member is open and willing to talk to you about the budget, whether you are an individual parent or whether you are a group of, a special interest group. So, but I want to ensure that people do understand our programming and what is out there and have the ability to look at it. So I do believe there's probably a way to enhance this. And I know, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have some real ideas on this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Dernak-Kofax. As the seconder of the motion, and I'm doing that because, as the chair, it works better this way, I am committed to transparency and accountability. And one of the concerns that I have had and expressed repeatedly since the first year I was on this board is that our budget has not been aligned, our whole budget has not been aligned with the strategic plan. We needed to have metrics by which we could measure ourselves and our strategic plan. And then we need a budget that is aligned with those metrics. In prior years, prior to 2016, when I came on the board, we had what they called operational expectations. And in those operational expectations, there was greater, a lot more detail provided to the board in that budgeting process. And that included doing trend analysis
And that included doing trend analysis, an individual that showed how monies for an individual operational activity had changed over time, and a look into the future. So it's a three-year snapshot as well as a statement of future expectations. That no longer is provided to this board. And I believe that it is critical for us as a board, especially in times when our dollars are tight, that we need to ensure that we have a greater understanding at the operational level of where monies are being spent and if they reflect the priorities of the board to ensure that every child by name and by need is given a world-class education here in Fairfax County and that honors the commitment that we made to our employees to have a competitive pay system as well as benefits. And so, from my perspective, what this follow-on motion does is it moves us forward to increasing transparency, increasing our ability to make informed decisions in the budgeting process. And so that is why I have brought this forward. I have been speaking with the, the head of our chief operating officer with Dr. Brabran, with Ms. Burden about this for several years. This builds on a follow-on motion that I made in 2016. And so I think especially coming up this year, we need to be committed to this transparency. Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased you have presented this follow-on motion as with, along with Ms. Darnak-Kofax. This is our ninth year of developing a budget for Fairfax County Public Schools, and it has always been my desire that we could take a much deeper look at our $3.2 billion budget. We know that there are federal and state requirements that we must absolutely fund every year. But beyond that, we do, as a board, need to work with the superintendent and his team and allow the public to have greater access and ability to look at department by department, where are our positions, where are we spending our funding? And so I really do want to also give voice to Dr. Brabran. You have been very, very supportive as a leader in your conversations with our board about this desire, and I really appreciate that collaborative tone that you have brought to this discussion. As Ms. Darnak-Kofax said, it's not that the board is saying there's a lack of transparency, but we are concerned about how do we get a deeper look. Even this year, the board did not have time and ability to look beyond the proposed $172 million in new spending with very little look back at the existing dollars that we've spent just in this fiscal year 20 alone. So I look forward to partnering with our board and Dr. Brabran on this effort. I look forward to looking at other school divisions, whether it's Arlington, Loudoun County, or others around the country that have a best-in-practice approach. And finally, I'll just say that anyone who's actually tried to study our budget, you will find things are in multiple locations. There's a program budget, there's an adopted budget. Too many things are in too many different documents. I'd like to see that they be brought closer together so people can get a whole picture. So, thank you both for bringing this together as a follow-on.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Just briefly, first I want to say thank you to both of you for bringing this motion forward. I know you and I had a conversation about this, Chairman Corbett Sanders, about the need for greater transparency about our budget, and while it is very transparent, I think we need to go back to looking at our program budget and our advertised budget. I would just like to add to what Ms. McLaughlin said. I think we do need clarity as we move forward in this process to our public as about regarding what the program budget versus advertised budget and the differences are and where this funding streams come from, as well as what's fixed costs versus costs that we can either redeploy or add. I think that would be helpful in our transparency efforts. I also would like, I really like the idea of looking at our program budget and tying everything we're spending to our strategic plan to make sure that what we're doing really reflects today's needs and what it means to provide a 21st century world-class education, and also to review our legacy programs to make sure they are the most effective in providing the services and education that our constituents desire. So I just wanted to add that I think it's important to make sure that we have real clarity in our budgets and review all of them, and I do agree with Ms. McLaughlin in terms of tying them together in, rather than pieces in different places. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
I mean, it's one of those things where, again, just trying to get everything pulled up here. Here we go. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to prepare quarterly reviews of the fiscal year 21 budget and recommend adjustments based on the increased availability of funds. Future recommendations should include potential investments being proposed by the county for employee compensation as well as strategic school-based services.
Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Very briefly, I do want to just, for our colleagues, for the school system, and most importantly, for our employees, I wanted to make sure that the board had a clear message to all of you that we look forward to partnering with the board supervisors and recognizing that while today is not the budget we had hoped it would be just a few months ago, we are committed that as the economic landscape changes, hopefully with more federal dollars coming down to our public schools, that we will be able to see infusion of funds that allow us to look at the needs we couldn't meet today. And one of those, most importantly, is employee compensation, as was also noted by the board supervisors when they passed their budget just a few weeks ago. So this is mostly just to demonstrate our commitment to our employees and also to all of our families who count on us deploying our resources the best way possible, especially as we go into the next school year.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Anderson?
I just wanted to add that this quarterly review process just allows us to be a little bit more responsive in a much more timely manner regarding our revenue and the expenditures and other commitments we've had to postpone. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Before I call for the vote, I will clarify that this quarterly review process is something that we are doing in partnership with not only the county but also the state. When the governor adopted the budget this past April, he adopted it clarifying that there were a number of initiatives, including employee compensation for our teachers, that were being put on pause rather than deciding we weren't doing anything with it. And that pause was to reflect the situation we were in regarding the COVID-19. When he did that, the county mirrored that with their approach to the budget, and this reflects, this also mirrored that. So all three entities in the state of Virginia that are responsible for providing a world-class education for our students are working in tandem to make this happen. So with that, I'll call for the vote.
No, Ms. Corbett Sanders, we still have five more follow-on motions as part of the omnibus.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. This is a new process. I apologize, folks. Ms. McLaughlin, I call on you for a follow-on motion.
Yes, this is number three in our gathering of seven. So I move that the school board direct the superintendent to present and discuss at a future work session the financial breakdown of costs for the FY '21, $28.8 million in new funding that is earmarked for new student enrollment.
Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, I appreciate prior conversations I've had with school board members on my interest with this one. As noted in the main budget, we simply don't have time to speak to everything that is being proposed in a new budget, and I think that since this is one of the largest expenditures we have going into fiscal year 21, that's brand-new expenditures, it will be valuable for the board as well as for the public, I think, to get a greater idea of how Dr. Brabran and his team will be utilizing these funds. So I appreciate everyone's support on this, and again, feel free to comment, but we'll vote after we get through all of them.
Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Very briefly again, I know we started this conversation back at a work session in January, but it's definitely, I'm sorry, not January, yes, in January, but it's one that continues to require our attention, particularly given the climate that we're in, where we are expecting a number of shifts and greater results and greater challenges with our students. So I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Would anybody like to speak to the motion before we go to the next one? Okay. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
Thank you. I hope this is the last one of mine in queue. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to include elementary school principal pay parity as part of any future fiscal year 21 proposed increases to employee compensation.
Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, as we talked about earlier, how we want to make sure this board conveys its priorities and its commitments to our employees, this was an important follow-on motion. For several of us who've served on the board for a number of years, we know that our elementary school principals have talked to us about the incredible workload and demands that are on their time, and we had promised to do a compensation study to look at their workload as well as the compensation that comes with it in comparison to our middle school principals. And while the compensation study did reveal a parity in workload, there isn't necessarily the parity in pay just yet. I do want to compliment the Elementary School Principals Association and Dr. Brabran, who recognized that in light of our COVID economic climate, that this needed to be postponed out of the budget for now, but we did think it was important that this be recognized as still a value and a priority as we see what happens with our funding heading into this next fiscal year. I appreciate the support from colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Anderson?
I'm happy to second this motion because as a former elementary school principal, I realize the task that lies before our principals, and it really was painful for me to have to support the idea of postponing this expenditure for this year, given all what I know regarding this work. However, in this climate, this is, it was the right thing to do, continues to be the right thing to do. Having said that, it is important that we return to this conversation at first opportunity, and I welcome the opportunity to be sure we place this as part of our discussions coming up in the quarterly reviews. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Would anybody else like to speak to this motion?
I would like to just add one aspect to this motion and why it's so important. Ms. McLaughlin mentioned this briefly, the workload parity is quite significant. Many people don't realize that in Fairfax County, we actually have elementary schools that have as many, if not more, students than some of our high schools or some of our middle schools. We have elementary schools that exceed 1,000 students in a single building, and so I very much welcome this follow-on motion. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson.
I now call on Ms. Bukarski for a follow-on motion. Ms. Bukarski? We can't hear you, Ms. Bukarski. I'm sorry, Ms. Bukarski, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Welcome.
Okay. I apologize. I don't know what happened. I move that the board direct the superintendent to develop a district-wide technology plan to be reviewed annually, taking into account the increased investment in technology to meet the guidelines set forth in OE 12 of the governance manual, and should include a distance learning component as well as data and privacy considerations. A preliminary report to the board should be provided no later than December 1st of 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski, and I will be seconding that motion. Ms. Bukarski, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, thank you. I believe this is a straightforward motion, and with the increased investment in funding, it is imperative that we have a plan that will provide a clear vision for the use of technology to support teaching and learning and ensure alignment with the school division's overall strategic goals. This operational expectation already exists, and this motion is an assurance that we pause, reassess, and ensure that our plan is up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Very well said. I would just add to that, that the operational expectation in our governance manual, we stopped following those in 2015. This is going back to our operational expectations but also expanding upon them. And the reason this is so important is that in 2015, our technology, our approach to technology in Fairfax County Public Schools was bring your own device. The focus point was on the underlying infrastructure for technology in the school system, and it did not take into account, as we moved forward with a one-to-one device program in our high schools initially, and then with our middle schools, and we expect next year, if it goes forward, that we were, next year, we will be rolling it out to our elementary school students as well because of the distance learning. It's also really important that as part of this follow-on motion, that we address critical issues such as the cyber security, the security of our systems, as well as the privacy available to our students and families in, when they use technology. And there is a crossover between this technology plan, SR and R, with the cyber, with the digital citizenship responsibilities, and this is really a, something that I think will add to greater awareness and understanding as we move forward, and remembering that a critical piece of this will be distance learning. And I am hoping that the plan will incorporate much of the work that, or many of the recommendations that are being provided to the superintendent through his technology advisory committee as well. And I have a number of people who would like to speak to this. I'm going to start with Mr. Frisch.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders, and thank you, Ms. Bukarski. I think this is one of the most important follow-on motions that we have on our agenda today for two reasons. One, earlier this year when we were deciding to expand FCPS on to middle schools, Ms. Bukarski urged a follow-on motion that would bring some accountability to the type of technology that we're using, to make sure that we're using best practices, that we have metrics of success, and that the technology is more than a paperweight bra home, that it's actually enhancing the education that students are receiving. We also did a follow-on motion that would give parents and educators an opportunity to see information like screen time usage and application usage. This is a, this has far more teeth than those two original follow-on motions, which is why I'm particularly excited to support it, especially as we continue to expand our one-to-one technology into elementary schools, as we think about the future of distance learning long after coronavirus has gone away. This is precisely the type of approach we need. Rashna Seismarheiser and I had proposed a follow-on motion that didn't quite make it far enough, that would have advocated for a quarterly or regular, you know, test run of our distance learning capabilities. I think this type of approach, looking at the technology on a granular level, brings us much of the way there in making that goal a reality as well. So I appreciate both of you for bringing us to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, I fully support this motion. I feel very strongly about our technology use and the importance of blended learning. But, and I think that this is, we have a very unique opportunity. Ms. Corbett Sanders already mentioned, our technology advisory council is moving forward, and it makes perfect sense that we can rely on some of this industry expertise that has been so generous to come forward to join us as we move forward to plan for summer, fall, and the future of technology use in FCPS. You know, they, I think, are in a very unique position to have some input into this first report that we're talking about. You know, we have a tough job. We need to have a serious plan to meet the needs of all of our users, students, We need to have a serious plan to meet the needs of all of our users, students, parents, teachers, administrators, not even, you know, we're really focused on instruction here, but not even to mention the incredible systems that we have in our support offices, budget, HR, et cetera. You know, these need to be looked at as well around these issues of, we've already mentioned security. And we absolutely need reliable and coherent user interfaces for all of our users, you know, our pre-K all the way through high school and our parents. So I'm excited to see, you know, this motion and, you know, the reporting that we should be having on a regular basis around the incredible investments that we have in technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Cohen?
Thanks very much. I really appreciate both you and Ms. Bukarski bringing this follow-on motion. I think, as Carl said, it may be the most important follow-on motion that we have ever had. I have not made any bones about my significant concerns about the use of technology with our students. And I just, again, hope that the focus of a lot of this will be making sure not only their security is protected, but also their mental health. You know, I think as we potentially look at increased demand for more online time, then we've got to do a better job of educating our students about digital citizenship, but also about helping support our parents in making sure that the impacts of screen time and the impacts of what they're seeing don't have ramifications far beyond their time here at FCPS. So I, again, appreciate you all bringing it forward, and I'm highly supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you very much. I just want to follow, thank you, I appreciate that. I want to follow up a little bit. First, I agree with everybody that this is one of the most important follow-on motions we can bring, and I want to follow a little bit with what Mr. Frisch said. As he mentioned, he and I had a follow-on motion to talk specifically about technology needs for sort of regular digital learning technology plans. So our students continue to have and maintain those digital learning skills, perhaps on a quarterly way, and I hope they'll be considered as part of this review as we're looking at our technology plans. And I just want to emphasize the importance of that in building students who are ready for 21st century workforce and education. As we may see in articles, there are many employers who are considering not going back to offices the way they were before, having employees continue to work from home. So I think making sure that our students build those digital, not just citizenship, but digital skills for the 21st century workplace is really important now, considering how our workplace is changing, as well perhaps as our colleges are changing as more learning goes online. So I just hope that will be part of our plan going forward, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I just wanted to really put into context how important this follow-on motion is for me and I believe for the board. We do communicate to the public as a body, not as individuals, and the direction we give to the superintendent is the same. With that question, there's been a lot of sensitivity and regret and recognition that FCPS's distance learning rollout did not go as any of us had hoped. And the public has looked to the board to have an understanding of where we are as a body on what happened and what can be our next step to address it. And so I believe this follow-on motion demonstrates the board's serious commitment in partnering with the superintendent, recognizing he has a great starting plan with the Technology Council to advise him. But the public understandably wants reassurances from this board and from the school division on what is this digital and technology usage going to look like in our schools. So thank you guys for bringing great language on this, and I fully support this one.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Maron?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to add in addition to the focus that has been talked about already, ensuring, reflecting what we heard from our constituents today about cyberbullying and digital citizenship. And I really, you know, am eager for a plan to include how to safeguard our students and teachers from any kind of harassment or bullying, how to make sure systems are disabled that allow for that, and how to educate our students on being good digital citizens. There's some great material I was just reading by Keeping tolerance. I'd really love, we need to have this in there. So I do see that as a component of creating such a plan. So thank you for introducing it, Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yes, thank you. I do, in fact, agree with my colleagues, and I just want to emphasize that this not only reflects that we understand the need for digital provisions or supplies for all of our students, but also the responsibility that goes along with that. And I want the parents to know that this board takes that very seriously, and we certainly want to make sure that we have safe usage. I'm happy to have been able to collaborate with this board and work with Ms. Bukarski in the past to try to address that in previous motions. And I look forward to us having discussions to make sure that we really address constituent concerns.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I now call on Mr. Frisch for a follow-on motion.
Working on it. Convenient for my technology to have a few hiccups as we finish the technology follow-on motion. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to initiate comprehensive evaluation of FCPS communications practices and develop a division-wide strategic communications plan no later than January 1st, 2021. The strategic communications plan will specifically concern FCPS communications with parents, staff, students, stakeholders, the school board, and media.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Should we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Maron. Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just for a moment. Thank you. As we've gone through this distance learning, we've all seen a variety of different shortcomings in FCPS, despite everybody's hard work. One of the issues that's been brought up by parents time and again, and I know others have felt it as well, teachers have felt it, are communications shortcomings or lack of clarity. And in an effort to make sure that we are doing everything we can to communicate clearly, concisely, and quickly, this motion encourages the superintendent to initiate a comprehensive evaluation of our communications practices, which he can do, just as an example, with the outside help that we are receiving currently. And then using that, he can work with staff to develop a comprehensive strategic communications plan for everything from email to communications to social media, all of the different pieces that one would have in a strategic communications plan. Leaves it very broad and open because this is a very broad and open field that needs attention.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Maron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Frisch, for including me on this motion. As someone who is a communications professional, it is very tough to watch when people are seeking information and they can't seem to get it in the ways that is, you know, most helpful for them. And we do have people who are so eager to hear what the division is doing. And so I'm very excited that we're going to look at a very comprehensive way on what we can do better. And this also relates to the work that the board is doing to increase public engagement efforts and ensuring that we're receiving information and getting it out there as well. So I'm very excited about this and I'm eager to help in any way I can. So thank you for proposing the motion together.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Is Dr. Braybrand available? I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, Dr. Braybrand?
Hi, Dr. Braybrand. So I am really glad to see this motion. As you know, we've had extensive conversations leading up to all of last year about discrepancies, really, in our communications. And we, as a board, have talked about putting forward a communications plan. So I was wondering if you could tell the board, given that we've discussed this previously, at least that's my recollection, if you could perhaps tell the board where we are in following up on that so that I can, we can make sure that we're moving forward from there.
Well, sure, Ms. Keys-Gamara. We've done several things even past, this past year, to try to enhance communications. We've done a lot more work on Twitter. I've done a lot more of direct messaging. Myself personally is superintendent to Twitter. We've done a lot more use of social media. We focused on schools that we knew weren't using communications tools as well and faced some reputational risk. And we had the OCCR team identify them, much like we would Project Momentum schools for academics, and provide additional help with them to use social media, create their websites. We also have done some work, thanks to Chairman Corbett Sanders, with the Northern Virginia Realtors Association to begin to showcase our schools and our programs to them. So the word gets out about all of Fairfax County schools and what they're doing, and make sure people really know, as they're making decisions about living in communities, that any Fairfax County school is an outstanding school. Absolutely, we recognize there's still things we can do around enhancing our communications. That's why we are, with your support, reaching out to a strategic communications firm. We're almost in the final stages of selecting someone, and we'll be using their really review and audit of how our structures are, our processes, to help us continue to enhance the momentum that we've started. And I will also just say honestly, the last several weeks, as we've faced some challenges, we've increased the frequency of going, myself going on media, radio, TV, doing town halls, much as other board members such as yourself and your colleagues have done. And I think those things that we've done over this last month need to become part and parcel of what our ongoing communication strategy is moving forward. So I appreciate the question. We've done a lot. We have more to do, and we'll be glad to share. I hope we can share an update with the board, frankly, prior to January, or perhaps as we start the school, because communication, as we start our return-to-school scenarios is just paramount. So we'll work to do it earlier than the date envisioned in this follow-on motion.
Thank you. I wanted to give you that opportunity because these have been ongoing discussions. And I know, Dr. Braybrand, I think at one point, and I don't exactly have it in front of me, but you had said you would be giving the board a report. And so I look forward to the interim report leading up to the final report. But I also wanted the community to know that this has been an ongoing concern, and I certainly support our continuing efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to support this and follow on the comments that my colleagues have made. Dr. Braybrand, since I can see you, I'll just comment directly to you and what you were just sharing. I so appreciate your commitment to being as accessible and visible to our community. It's really one of the hallmarks of your leadership. That said, I will tell you what I hear from families in my district. We need a website that people can easily find information. It's still not where we need to be, but I want to compliment your team for making it better than it's been. I am less interested in about our Twitter presence because I hear again from families that my generation of parents, the cell phone text alerts and emails are where they're going to see consistent and timely and urgent messaging. Like when we had to close suddenly on March 13th, not getting the text and the email message out that night, only getting a Twitter message out is an example of Twitter is not how parents want to hear things, especially in those kinds of situations. But at a very macro level, I'm excited about the steps you've taken. I did think that this follow-on motion is crucial, again, to demonstrate to the public that we know we have room to grow in our communications. We need to be more nimble. I am thrilled that Lucy Caldwell, I'm giving her a shout-out, is part of the communications team with veteran John Torrey. I believe that you will help us get better at making sure not just that it's the feel-good things about FCPS, because frankly, we do that a lot. I want to just look at how we can be getting strategic information to our families when it matters most. And we've certainly seen that through the COVID. So thank you, everybody, for bringing a very important part of our division. Communications touches our families and our employees every single day. And also the media, I do want to say one other thing. We've got to be very responsive, very direct. And when we see media stories that do not accurately reflect what's happening with FCPS, I want to make sure we have a very strong voice in that, that the public knows and can count on the fact that we are, yes, a premier school system, but we also acknowledge when we need to improve.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darinette Kofax?
Yes, as my colleagues already expressed, I did want to point out, while I really appreciate the spirit of this amendment, this has been something that has been ongoing, as Dr. Braybrand confirmed, as you said. And I'm sorry, Dr. Braybrand, when did you say, again, the consultant, because you have bids out, is that correct on this?
Yeah, we're finishing the interview process, I would say, by mid-June at the latest.
Okay, all right. So I do want to, thank you for doing that. Thank you for working on continuous improvement in this area. I think it is very, very important as we move forward to understand that, I think, Ms. McLaughlin, you spoke well to the fact that there are differences, and that's why I think we need a consultant to look at our overall communications. What works well for some people doesn't work well necessarily for our families. How should we best communicate that information? I think we are doing a great job currently under John Torrey and his team, including Lucy and Catherine and so many people who are always there. So the continued emphasis on moving forward in a progressive fashion with our communication, but maintaining a system that works for all of our parents and families. And I look forward to continuing to move this forward, and obviously, much sooner than we had anticipated as well, knowing that information, Dr. Braybrand. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Darinette Kofax. Ms. Cohen?
I'm supportive of this follow-on motion, and I'm appreciative of my colleagues for bringing it. I just, just in response, Dr. Braybrand, to what you said, I just always want us to be careful to remember that, like, tactics and platform are not as important as a strategy. You know, how we communicate, why we communicate, what we're saying when we communicate, I think are just critically important. And the medium that we're using is also important, but the volume and number of ways we communicate is not the true measure of effective communication. So I look forward to all that you are doing in this area to improve it. I agree with my colleagues. It's a constant refrain from Springfield District constituents, and so I look forward to working together to improve it.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you. Just briefly, I just wanted to piggyback on what Ms. Cohen said about the platforms versus messaging, and just wanted to add that I think it's important to help her to really streamline in a way that people can skim. And I know we're getting in the weeds here, but just when you keep a communication, how we communicate, explaining the why and doing it in a way that our families that are busy can easily get that information, I think is very important. So I'm really excited to see a communications plan that really addresses the ways people really receive information in the 21st century and our need for our very well-educated and involved constituents to understand why things are happening or decisions are made behind them. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. And before I call for the vote, I too would like to speak a moment to this motion. In particular, I'm glad that some of the previous speakers mentioned that this is a work in progress and that this is something that has been going on for a while, a recognition that there were challenges with how we were communicating and what we were communicating. And so I'm a big believer in strategic plans, and this is really a strategic communications plan is what is being developed here, starting with a comprehensive review of what we already plan is what is being developed here, starting with a comprehensive review of what we already are doing. And when we do a review, we have to be willing to say, what are we doing well, what are we doing not well, and what aren't we doing and why? But there's another piece of it that I would urge you, Dr. Braybrand, and perhaps you can answer this. I don't see this as a one-and-done. And I see this as more of something that should be part of our standard operating procedures. As technologies change over time, as mediums become available and others go away, we are constantly having to refresh the way we communicate. And I will always, I always say that we're always going to be in a catch-up mode because the technology gets out there, it starts being picked up, and then all of a sudden we should be utilizing it. So that's one piece. What are the vehicles in which we communicate? But equally important, it actually is more important, it's the why are we communicating? And there are going to be tiers of reasons that we communicate. Information-only, so an alert system, a system in which we are doing crisis communications because something happened that requires engagement with the community immediately. And then there's also the communications in celebrating, because you talk often about joy in this county, Dr. Braybrand, and the importance of having joy in our work. And part of our communications should be celebrating the joys of our teachers, our staff, our students, and the successes they have as well. And so when you work with the, with your communications team, I hope that you will bring back to us two things. One, a tiered system of communications, as well as recommendations on how we will keep our plan fresh and up to date, rather than doing one in 2020 or 2021 and then waiting five, six years before we do it again, because we know that the, the way people communicate is changing so rapidly. We need to be more nimble in how we do it as well.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I agree. It isn't one-and-done. It is about continuous improvement. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I'm going to call, I'm going to call on Ms. Darinak-Kofax for a follow-on motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to develop an FY21 plan in response to the AAP study recommendations and to include any associated operational costs in future FY21 quarterly budget review. This plan should include greater accountability and fidelity of implementation for AAP services, including but not limited to young scholars, the Young Scholars Program, and the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher staffing.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Tolan? Ms. Darinak-Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. Well, in the spirit, as we were talking of continuous improvement, I look forward to the continuous improvement in our AAP programming. I particularly highlighted the areas of the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher and the Young Scholars as areas of improvement, because these are ones that have already been shown great success. And one thing in particular, having not only having an Advanced Academic Resource Teacher in our elementary school or middle school, that's needed to help us actively identify and advocate for students showing advanced academic potential, as well as bring strategies down to the entire school. So that's extremely important, that that's the role that they provide now, not just identification, but bringing advanced programming to the entire community. It's very hard to do that when you're, when you're sharing schools. This, having this recommendation, this was something that the, our own Advanced Academic Advisory Committee has been advocating for, for over 10 years, and as well as was in the report from our consultants. And also, I wanted to highlight the Young Scholars, because our, again, our consultants confirmed that this program is recognized nationally as a model, being replicated in other school districts across the county. But unfortunately, here in Fairfax, even with this fine program, it's one that hasn't been implemented with fidelity. I'm not sure if my numbers are exactly correct, but I believe only about 86 or 87 or 101 elementary schools are having Young Scholars identified. I know that was a number from six to eight months ago, but I just think this is something that we need to continue to do. The conversation will continue as a board, but I want to ensure that when we look at this as a board, we have particular emphasis on proven, tried strategies that will move us forward, but not just those, the many other recommendations that were in the report. So I look forward to continuing conversation. And I put this up as a budget amendment, because there was a placeholder in here, and now we've kind of put that into the COVID reserve, but this is something that can be reviewed with each quarter to make sure we have the recommendations, we have the improvements that are based upon the recommendations, not just from this consultant, but from best practices for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darinak-Kofax. Whoever's phones ringing, please mute. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to the second?
Yes, thank you. I'll be brief. I want to thank Ms. Darinak-Kofax for her remarks. I fully support everything that she had to say. As a parent whose children took advantage of various levels of AAP throughout their time with Fairfax County Public Schools, I know firsthand the importance of this program. And also, both as a educator at Fairfax County Public Schools and as a community partner with some of the work that I've done over the last several years, I've been able to work with the Advanced Academic Resource Teachers in our schools and have participated in some of the Young Scholars Program work as well, and still have firsthand knowledge of how powerful, you know, the role of the AART can be and how great our Young Scholars Program can be to reach out to students that need that type of, you know, a little bit of extra help to help us to recognize the incredible potential that they have. In addition, of course, there are other recommendations in the report as well. You know, a 2E specialist, for example, was mentioned as a particular recommendation, and I would support, you know, taking a look at that too, as well as all of the recommendations that we discussed the other day. Again, I want to, you know, thank you for considering this, look at our Advanced Academic Program. I think that we really are truly trying to meet the needs of every student. We need to have a very strong program like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I have a number of board members who would like to speak to this. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you very much. I want to start by saying that I do, I do agree with the, with this motion, the need for what this motion discusses in terms of the AART teachers, in terms of the Young Scholars Program. I know those are both very proven to work to bring enrichment in advanced academics to all of our students, as well as build that, this foundational strength in our students to prepare them for the advanced academics work. However, I do want to, and I also want to thank Ms. Darinak-Kofax for working with me to include the, but not limited to, language in this motion. I very much appreciate her flexibility in adding that in discussing two of the several recommendations that our outside consultant brought with his, with their reports. But I did want to just mention that I do have a little concern about having this motion here now, as opposed to as, along with our other budget amendments in our year-end discussion. We had several, many of the budget amendments that were, that have been postponed until the July year-end discussion. I just wanted to say that the reason I feel that way is that we just had our presentation of the full report on Monday in the work session as a board. And while we had a wonderful, robust discussion about the report and the recommendations and the importance of the Young Scholars, the AART Program, there were many other recommendations in that report, including a 2E coordinator, which many of our specialist families have been asking for for quite a long time and has been the subject of work on the part of SEPTA and other parent organizations. And when we finished that meeting on Monday, I believe, my understanding of the board consensus was that we all needed another work session to really get into the depth of the report and come to some more consensus about the board, about what we wanted our superintendent to then review and come back with his and his team's best thinking on it. So I feel like this motion here, I wouldn't mind a motion that's broad to ask the superintendent to come back with best thinking on the plan, but pulling out specifically a couple of recommendations in the report, and I do respect Ms. Darinak-Kofax for saying these recommendations that other groups have made for a long time and have been shown to work, but specifically naming those two, to me, implies board direction on two specific recommendations when I feel like we could benefit and we had planned to have further discussion about all the recommendations to get to more of a consensus on board direction. So I just wanted to say that while I am supportive of this motion, I'm very much supportive of the Young Scholars Program and the AARTs, and I look forward to having more discussions with my colleagues about the report. I am a little concerned and feel this is a little premature right now, today. So thank you for hearing my concerns, and thank you, Ms. Darinak-Kofax, for working with me to broaden the motion as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I'm glad I had a chance to follow behind Ms. Seismarheiser, because we had talked about this, and I share her desire to make sure that the public really understands this follow-on motion, that it absolutely will ensure that the superintendent develops recommendations and that will come with some financial cost, and that it needs to reflect the study, the recommendations, and the direction of the board, not simply the two things that are noted in the follow-on motion. That said, I want to really make sure that the public does not have a misunderstanding about what this follow-on motion is saying, and it's specifically this. The board made clear after the first presentation on the AAP study that there is still more information needed from the researchers. There is still more dialogue, not just the board, to the superintendent, but our stakeholders and the board, conversations about what these robust recommendations to improve the AP services will be. So I do want to reassure everyone who is interested in following this issue that the board is absolutely having future work sessions with the superintendent. We will want to get that input, and the superintendent should not be developing a plan until after those robust conversations have occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to follow as well. I want to start by saying, you know, we have been working on this, and I know my colleagues have been working on this for some time. We had put in the forum topic, and we just got the study. At the conclusion of that study, one of the questions that we asked our experts was, what's the most important thing we can do? How can we move forward? And it was the language that those experts used, I think, that led to the language that is in this follow-on motion. There was a great deal of significance placed on the Young Scholars Program and, secondarily, the AARTs. I am particularly supportive of Young Scholars, because that is reflective of our fidelity concerns. But again, I look forward to the overall discussions that we have. I'm really glad that this is a continuing work. But I do want to point out that that was, those were some of the recommendations. What we see in this language actually was emphasized in our discussions, and I look forward to fleshing this out more.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Before I move on, I want to just add to this discussion. As the, as a member of the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee for many years and the chair of it for many years, actually, I was the chair when we worked on twice-exceptional and Advanced Academic Supports to twice-exceptional students. And it was from that work that the recommendation for a 2E handbook came about. I was disappointed that it took us years to actually implement the 2E handbook, but I am excited that it was finally done this past year and that that is the basis. And it was recognized by this consultant group on the importance of that. But that's the beginning. So I am pleased that the language was added, that said, "but not limited to." Along the same lines, the consultants were also very clear that they believed that every single one of our high school pyramids should have a middle school AAP program. And so I hope that as Dr. Braybrand puts together a plan in response to the AAP study that he takes very seriously, and I'm sure, I'm sure he will, that the plan is more comprehensive than just these two points, although I believe that those two points of having a more robust Young Scholars Program implemented with fidelity across the county is a priority and must be a priority, as well as advanced academic research teachers in all of our elementary schools. So I see these as two parts of a multi-paceted plan. Okay. So are there any board members who would like to speak to the omnibus motion before I move on? Ms. McLaughlin, are you, would you like to speak to the omnibus?
No, not at all. I'm very pleased with everybody had to say and look forward to the vote.
Okay. So with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the following on an omnibus motion, and I need to go back and read the whole thing, unless somebody wants to make a motion that says, "as stated previously."
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the omnibus motion that contains the seven previously discussed motions, please show your hands. So I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Pekarsky, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Cohen, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Darinak-Kofax, Ms. Seismarheiser, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That motion is unanimous. It carries. We have two additional follow-on motions that have just recently been submitted, so I call on Ms. Darinak-Kofax for a motion.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to begin the procurement process to support the purchase of 22,000 laptops to facilitate distance learning necessitated by the COVID pandemic.
And is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Tolan? Ms. Darinak-Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, but I, because I'm going to call on Dr. Braybrand, really, to speak to it. But I, my understanding is the current COVID crisis really has made it clear, I think, to all of us that we need devices in the hands of students for distance learning, particularly should it continue as it is right now. And, and even though it's anticipated that we can be, we're able to provide some existing older devices to most of the elementary schools in the next year, I understand that there's a need to begin the procurement process to purchase these 22 devices. So staff has recommended the issuance of a purchase order, because just as we had done it earlier, demand is high and supply is limited. And I asked Dr. Braybrand to speak to this.
And it's 22,000.
Is that what, isn't that what I said? Yeah, sorry. Sorry. I said something else.
Thank you, Ms. Darinak-Kofax and Chairman Corbett Sanders. Yes, I appreciate this. I recognize this coming a little late as a motion, but thank you for working with the administration. This 22,000 laptops will be sure that we can provide coverage across pre-K through 12th grade. As we look at return-to-school scenarios, as you know, one of our scenarios is a virtual or a distance learning scenario. We've also been asked and faced many questions from our community about, well, if we go back, what if we have to, if there's a second wave, return to distance learning? So it's critically imperative that we have laptops, not only to support our kids, and this board already took leadership to approve two months ago, FCPs ON for middle school kids, so all middle school kids will get new laptops. This is simply providing additional inventory to our current inventory that will be pushed down to elementary, so that we can make sure that every elementary kid has access to a device, as well as making sure some of our staff members, like our instructional assistants, have access to laptops as they look at a return-to-school scenario where they have access to laptops as they look at a return-to-school scenario where they will need devices. So, we apologize for the late notice. We reviewed this with our Superintendent's Technology Council, our first meeting, which was yesterday. I'll talk about it a little later in my Superintendent Matters. And with the supply chain deadlines right now, we really have to make a decision to go forward with purchase. We can work with the board and talk about exactly the details of whether we're using our COVID-19 reserve, or whether we're using our CARES Act money, or whether we would pursue a lease. But letting this authorization go forward now lets us meet the Friday deadline so that we can have these computers in Fairfax County Public Schools in August as we prepare for return-to-school. So thank you for supporting this and you and Ms. Corbett Sanders and again, excuse me, you and Ms. Tolan. And we thank you, Ms. Kofax, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Ms. Darnak Kofax, are you finished?
Yes.
Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your second?
Just very briefly, Dr. Brabran, thank you for that powerful explanation for the public. I just have had many conversations with, in particular, elementary school principals about how they've been scouring their buildings to find laptops to, you know, they're still having laptop distribution to make sure kids are prepared for whatever they need to do the rest of the school year and the, and through the summer. So I think this purchase is going to be key to making sure that we're successful moving forward. I've also heard many stories of, you know, families with, you know, multiple kids and, you know, even when you've got three little kids, even if you're in some of our schools with, you know, less free and reduced meals, three devices for three little kids is a lot. So families are really looking forward to this additional support. So happy to support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Again, I'm so sorry for my technology woes today. I did want to say thank you to Ms. Darnak Kofax and Ms. Tolan for bringing this forward. This is an important issue and I do know that is, is one that we talked about in great detail during our last work session, where we did also have conversations regarding differentiating between some of the devices that are going to be provided to some of our younger students. But this effort today under discussion, it's really to address our upper elementary students, fifth and sixth graders. At this point, we have over 18,000 laptops that have been flying out the door to support distance learning. And as I've said from the very beginning, and I continue to say now, we knew we had these gaps. And this situation with COVID-19 aggravated the challenges that already existed. We must close that digital divide. We must put every effort in ensuring that our students are ready to, to learn and for us to be able to respond to whatever may be presented in the fall. We cannot continue to have these conversations. And so I'm very much heartened that our superintendent is being proactive and making sure that we can procure these devices. So getting in that queue is key. I look forward to continuing conversations, but I'm very glad to support this because I know in my community particularly, we continue to distribute laptops and that is happening even this week. This is something that our students need and we must be able to provide them with the tools to engage in the learning that we are providing. Access is important. If you provide it, but they cannot reach it, you might as well not. And I think this is an opportunity for us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I appreciate what my colleagues have shared. I want to just add some broader understanding to some of this as well. As some in the public know, I have been very cautious about what it means to do one-to-one digital devices and increasing the amount of time that children are in front of a computer screen. And I think all of our board members have that mindfulness. But what is presented to the board by the superintendent is that while we are utilizing our school classroom devices to augment our distance learning for families that do not have access to these digital devices, we do not have enough in our inventory that if we have to continue in distance learning at any point in the next school year, there will be children who do not have devices. So the 22,000 will absolutely not cover all of our elementary school students by a long shot, but it is going to help ensure that for the 30% of our students and perhaps more who qualify for free and reduced lunch, that we do close that digital divide that Ricky Anderson mentioned just now. We do want to make sure that every child has access to learning, whether we're in a COVID closure or whether we're back in school. But I do want to also say how important it's going to be that the superintendent brings the data that many of us on the board have been asking for. We need to look at what we learned from this first year of rolling out the high school one-to-one digital devices. How many of the devices are actually being used by students? How many were not used by students? And how does that impact our purchasing decisions for the middle school? And that we are still very mindful about what it's going to mean at the elementary school level. Finally, the purchase of these devices, it is not talked about right now in the motion, where the funds will come from, but we, many of us have shared with the superintendent that is our expectation, this needs to come from COVID funding because it's a COVID problem and we do not want it drawing away from the operational funds that are needed to support all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Cohen?
I, to be candid, I am frustrated that I feel like perpetually our, our orders for this technology has been just letting us know at the last possible second. And these are very expensive. My, I guess I had a question that my understanding was that we were going to go back and revisit what was the most reasonable device for our younger kids. So I know that Dr. Anderson said this is for fifth and sixth grade, but Dr. Brabran said K through 12. So I just was hoping for some clarification on that first.
Sure. Yeah, sure. So just to remind the board, we would focus the newest computers that of course are in this purchase on fifth and sixth graders with Title I schools first. It is trying to provide coverage that we would have any kid needed a device that would be able to have access to it if we have a virtual scenario in the fall. We're not paying in this purchase brand-new computers for every elementary kid. Obviously, 22,000 is not. But to be, to target fifth and sixth graders in Title I, be able to have the ability to have access to a computer if a kid or family needs it. This would also allow for some of our staff members who we found through COVID-19 don't have the technology. To be very honest and candid with all of you, we know it's been late in the game, but we've done a pivot because we've been, we've been behind on the technology infrastructure for students and staff compared to some other divisions. COVID-19 has, has shown us that we have some catching up to do. Part of it is we're dealing with our, looking at these scenarios. We, we, we do have, we had a long-term plan, still have it, to get a broader group to look at K2, where we might want, when we're going to buy something new for that group, if we do FCPS ON at the elementary level, that they may need a different device. But we're not addressing that in this resolution today. And we'll bring that group together to make sure that when we get something new, that we're really looking at the needs of those youngest kids. Thank you.
Yeah, my, my feedback would just be, you know, to be candid, having been on the board for four and a half months, this is the second time now that we've been asked to buy about, you know, 50,000 computers with very little information and a last-minute pivot. I recognize that COVID has totally changed our supply chain, but I think you can probably understand our pause, you know, when, when we're being asked that so quickly. You know, my other big concern with this, and I, I will, I guess, support it because of distance learning needs, but I hope that we are hiring a sea of T-specs to come and, you know, retrofit 50,000 computers by our start date in August. So I just, I, I'm hopeful that when we're looking at budgetary items, that we're also realizing that this is going to take massive staff investment to get these computers all ready for our kids.
And if I could, Ms. Cohen, just a reminder, I do agree it was last minute, so I'm not going to make an excuse there. But I do recall that Mr. Smith walked through the technology purchase piece with the board just, just a while ago. I can't remember what day. And at the time, we were looking at some COVID spending. And again, as Ms. McLaughlin said, we have not determined where the final spending will go and it doesn't speak to that. But this lets us just go ahead and authorize it. As we were looking at the different devices, the reality is, and part of, we're having to hurry up, is the supply chains are locking down. If you're not going to get in the queue now, you're not going to be able to have provisions for August. So we're stuck between trying to be deliberative and involve the board to the deepest extent possible with some of the deadlines that vendors are coming back. They won't take an email. They won't take a verbal commitment. They need to know they're going to be able, that we're going to say we're going to purchase these because other folks are saying we'll take them too. So that's a little bit of the challenge right now, but I certainly appreciate that feedback and we'll work to do a better job moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Dr. Anderson, do you have a go-back?
It's okay. I just wanted to share one thing that I recall, if that, if I have just 30 seconds.
Take 30 seconds.
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. Cohen's question. And we all want to be very planful. But I also want to say in context, the conversation regarding having computers for our elementary students was not one that we had until very recently. So we were already working from a little bit behind with the elementary conversation, hence to where we are today. So I just wanted to offer that context.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And so before I take the vote on this, I do want to just, for the public to understand this a bit more, there are 100,000 students in K through six. And the request today is for 22,000 devices. There's another 77, almost 78,000 devices that are being redeployed, that are, that have been looked at and assessed to determine whether or not they have sufficient lifespan left to be able to be used in our classrooms in the K through six environment. And so this really is almost an emergency measure to make sure that we have a device in the hands of every child in K through six, plus the IAs. I do believe this is an interim step to the fuller discussion and development of that technology plan for, especially for our younger learners. And so I do look forward to a further discussion of this and input from your Technology Council, Dr. Brabran. So with that, all those in favor of the motion to, and I do not have that motion in front of me. If you could put it up on the screen, that would be great. I'll read it. To authorize the superintendent to begin the procurement process to support the purchase of 22,000 laptops to facilitate distance learning necessitated by the COVID pandemic. All those in favor? So I have Ms. Seismar Heizer, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Omish, Ms. Mikarsky, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Cohen, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. And that motion is unanimous. It carries. I will now call on Ms. Omish for a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I move the school board direct the superintendent to assess the increased needs for school counselors, parent liaisons, social workers, psychologists, school nurses, and interpreters in our schools in response to the COVID crisis, as well as to ensure better alignment with best practice ratios. The superintendent will present this assessment and recommend its staffing needs at the year-end budget review.
Do you have a second?
Yes, Megan McLaughlin.
Okay. Ms. Omish, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. So it is befitting that May's Mental Health Awareness Month, over 20% of Fairfax County youth report having considered or attempted suicide, more than a third report overwhelming levels of stress, and about a third report depression. I sent the original amendment language and thorough rationale to my colleagues about this last week and was happy to announce my thinking on it during our public work session last week as well. In my conversations since then with staff and members of the board, in order to ensure approval of these essential supports and obtain consensus from my colleagues, I have put forth this follow-on motion in lieu of the amendment I had originally put forth to add counselors, psychologists, and parent liaisons to our school communities. I believe it is essential for us to anticipate needs before they arise and for us to prepare proactively for what is to come, with steps in place for contingency planning. With that in mind, I would also like to model data-informed decision-making in doing so. As a division, we have been well above multiples of the appropriate best practice ratios for these positions. For example, while minimum professional standards for psychologists are one for every 500 to 700 students, we are at 1,213. For social workers, the ratio is one to 1,226, while professional standards demand one to 250. School nurses, one to 2,900, while standards are to 750. While we are much closer with the counselor ratio at 288 rather than 250, as I know my colleagues are well aware, and Dr. Brabran certainly had been planning for in advance of COVID, state mandates will direct us towards increased needs soon enough. Without a doubt, the crises we find ourselves in have only exacerbated needs, with counselors and parent liaisons spending hours well beyond their expected workloads, tracking down individual families, and tending to student needs. What's more, experts are speaking to the traumas and stresses due to major life changes that everyone is experiencing. Our own staff have been reporting their awareness of increased substance abuse and negative behavior. We know about poverty risks and heightened food insecurity. From our county partners and family services, we know about major drops in reporting of child abuse and neglect within our community homes. It's fair to say that all of us as a board, and I know my colleagues, support the spirit of this effort and the evidence that backs it up. So we're left with two questions: the urgency to include in the operations budget, and the tougher questions that always come with considerations of limited resources and competing initiatives to ensure fiscal responsibility in our decision-making. On the point of urgency, we are well aware of increasing gaps as we continue in distance learning, and we are unable to meet the needs of students to the levels we had prior. Notably, as my colleagues are aware, it's important to begin hiring prior to the summer, when the pool for school employees is smaller and increasingly less competitive. For school psychologists in particular, there is a notable shortage in child psychologists across the country and in our region, and it is imperative that we move quickly to hire the best for our schools. Finally, for the funding piece, I would like to highlight the potential for availability of funds in savings and in particular, at this time, due to major transitions as we are teaching virtually. My colleagues may recall Dr. Brabran's central office material savings outline in previous presentations. I have also worked rigorously to identify what I sent in my own humble thinking of potential areas for savings to get us started. After conversations with colleagues and Dr. Brabran, I found it most appropriate to provide flexibility in identifying savings funds and delineating staffing based on present and evolving needs, and to rely on our experts in Dr. Brabran and his team to identify these areas and apportion staffing appropriately after taking that closer look. So with that, I do eagerly await the opportunity to work together on all of this in more detail, to address the concern of my colleagues and to make sure we do get this right in year-end conversations when we hear from Dr. Brabran and the team. And as I said, I know my colleagues believe in the spirit of this and I want to make sure we get it right.
Thank you, Ms. Omish. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I'm very happy to second this motion. I first want to compliment my colleague of our niche. I know that you spent countless hours talking with Dr. Brabran, leadership team members, to really get an informed idea of where the need is related to positions that support the whole child and mental health needs of our students. To my colleagues, I am supporting this wholeheartedly because I have been a champion for many years now, as you know, about the issue related to school nurses. I can't imagine a more pressing moment in this COVID era that having health aides that are not trained, health-trained clinicians versus school nurses that many, many school divisions, not just in the Commonwealth but around the country, already provide. We are going to need trained healthcare providers in our schools to not only recognize in our schools to not only recognize students who may be having symptoms related to COVID, but to any of the issues that they are dealing with as they return to school, and especially in our high-need schools, high-poverty schools. So with that said, Dr. Brabran has heard me say over and again, that when the ratio is supposed to be 1 per 500 for school nurses to a student, and we have 1 per 3,000, we have a long way to go. And I really appreciate the other ratios that Ms. Omesh brought up. So my goal is that this board demonstrates to the public, as well as to Dr. Brabran, our very serious commitment and intention to use these best practice ratios, and our expectations that when he brings to us recommendations on how to spend the COVID funding to support the mental health needs, and this helps our teachers and our administrators who are trying to educate children but cannot provide all these additional services and support. That's what makes this motion, I believe, extremely important to communicate to the public. So I hope people will support it.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Sorry, I told them, I think I forgot to take my hand down. I didn't have a comment on this.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
I'm sorry, I didn't have my hand up.
Okay, Ms. Cohen?
I'm sorry, I just shoved a crack in my mouth. I fully support the idea behind this. I think, to be candid, we have discussed this at length in work sessions, and Dr. Brabran has continued to make a renewed commitment, that he recognizes that this is an essential part of what we are asking for, and, and what's very important in how we do a full wraparound services for our students coming back into this. The one thing I will say is that I do support the intent of it, but I think the process of how we do this is super important. And I think that we've worked long and hard, much to the credit of Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson, to make sure that we've been able to have full-vetted conversations as a board about all of these follow-on motions, all of these amendments, and all of the proposals that Dr. Brabran has brought to us. I don't feel that that's the case with this one, to be totally candid. And I think as a board, it is so important for us to commit, to follow them through with the obligations that we, and commitments that we've made to each other about the amount of time we're going to give each other to, to look through and vet things. So I will vote in favor of it, because I am in favor of the spirit, but I'm not in love with the process. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I appreciate following Ms. Cohen, because I, I share many of the sentiments that she just expressed. I believe we all believe in this work. We all believe that this is the right thing to do. But I'm also at this point where I do think this kind of thinking is driving all of our work. In going through this budget, as vice chair, we've had the opportunity to have these conversations, both in finance committees and in work sessions with our colleagues. I do believe it's the embedded part of our return to learn, and we will continue and should continue to try to close the gaps that exist with the ratios. Having said that, I, I do want to commit to this work, but I will not be voting in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, okay. So Ms. Darrenak Kovacs?
I guess I have, because this has come so late in the process, and I, and I do, as my other colleagues have expressed concerns about this. We are, we are all committed to making sure that our students have every bit of wraparound services provided for them at every turn. We have known this has not been possible for so many reasons for so long. So I appreciate the spirit, but I guess I would ask the maker of the motion, what details the intent? I'm not certain what I'm voting on here, other than a commitment to what we are all strongly committed to. Am I, is it a budget motion? Is there dollars committed to it? Are there, are there plans? So I would ask the maker of the motion, or Dr. Brabran, or somebody to give me more specificity, while I, I appreciate the spirit. I, I don't know what I'm voting on here.
Ms. Omesh?
Yeah. So, you know, as I, as I mentioned, this specifically is to ask Dr. Brabran to look with his staff at savings that could, or actually, no, I'm sorry, to assess the needs for the various positions outlined, which are the wraparound services, and to apportion based on what they view to be the needs as the experts and as the staff team for each of these areas, with two considerations. One, it projected increases due to COVID, and second, alongside best practice ratios and with consideration to that. So when they're able to then come back to us with the, during the year-end budget conversation with that, with those, with that outline, then we're able to make informed decisions utilizing the year-end funds to move forward. And I want to clarify also for my colleagues, this is a modification of the amendment that was presented last week, and that I'd kind of, you know, been calling you guys about and talking about extensively. The idea with this was to, it's modified for a few reasons. You know, one is to ensure that there's wider support. Two, it's to ensure that we have the best study of what is the most appropriate assignment of different staff members, right? So rather than independently doing research about where the highest needs may be, we can rely on staff to come up with their best assessment of what ratios for all of these we want to live up to, and what's possible given what we have. So that's the intention with this. It's to direct Dr. Brabran to come back to us with his assessment, and specifically on these positions, in what we're anticipating and what we would hope to have as a system. I hope that clarifies that. And it'll inform our budget conversation, which will happen later in time.
Thank you. So before we call a vote...
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I do have my hand up for a go back.
Ms. McLaughlin, I haven't spoken, is that okay? I'll, I'll call on you afterwards.
Of course, not a problem. It's just you said before we call a vote, so I just want to make sure you knew I was in the queue.
Okay. We haven't been doing go-backs today, but I will make sure you can. The, here's, Ms. Omesh, I love the spirit of this motion. I do think that we, the more we bring attention to those wraparound services, that we should be very conscious of the importance of it. My concern is that, as written, it seems to set budget direction for the future as a priority. And I don't know where our budget is going to be in the future. And every time we add additional staff to our budget, then it, it creates an increase in our operating budget demands. And my concern is that because of the uncertainty in the times that we live, to make a commitment to increasing this staffing versus perhaps increasing staffing for our English-language learner students, or having staffing for other demands that we may have. The way it's written, it says, "and recommend the staffing needs at the year-end budget review," as though that, these staffing needs would be a priority over other staffing needs. And so as long as there is clarity that this does not say, set a priority for this staffing need versus other staffing needs, but rather that you are looking for insights from the superintendent as to whether we invest in these services versus investing in others. I mean, I think that that's, that's the crux of it, is that we need to understand that. And the other piece, just so that we look at this with the full picture, is that the county has increased school nurses this year. I wish that we could have matched the number of school nurses that the county did with an increase of seven from their side. Last year, they increased nurses, and Ms. McLaughlin and I worked together to match that increase. What we should be looking at is the combination of services that we provide ourselves versus services that are provided through the county, and look at it more holistically in a one Fairfax way.
Right. I appreciate the comments. I mean, I will say, the, the whole purpose of this is for us to be able to have the conversation about prioritization. So there, nowhere in this language is there prioritization of this. I would argue myself that there is urgency for these positions, but that aside, that this will allow us, based on data, based on staff's expertise and informed perspective, to have a conversation about what we want to prioritize. You know, in our current review, we approved a number of things without really having a sense of where the data is, what the best use of our small amount of money is at this time, right? So we want this to be done so that come year end, we're not in the same position where we're like, all right, I think this is important, but what do I know about how important that is relative to anything else? And so I think this will equip us to be in a position to be able to make those judgments. And I'm happy to allow, you know, Ms. McLaughlin, I think, might want to add to this, but, but that's the prioritization concern, because I think ultimately, in meeting one Fairfax and in arriving at more equitable outcome, in a tough time like this, we want to be able to rely on the facts and, and look at how far, you know, how far away we are from where we want to be. So...
Correct, Ms. Omesh. But what we need to do is look at it broader than just ourselves. And then the other piece of it is, is my concern of the reliance on what the national standards are, which is important, but we also have to take into account what the state SOQs are, because that will drive some of the funding and any sort of support cap, support staff cap established by the state, which is another factor in this. So as long as we're looking at this as just purely to provide information, but not to make a commitment that we are, that we will choose these type of staffing over perhaps staffing in other areas in July.
Right. And that's a determination we would make as a board in the year-end conversation based on this information.
So just, Dr. Brabran, do you understand my concern?
Listen, I, I'm listening to your conversation. This tells me that I would bring staffing needs around these areas for year end. That doesn't preclude me from bringing other staffing needs, and then the board would have to prioritize what those staffing needs are.
So that's what I'm asking for, is to make sure that it, this doesn't, doesn't jump over to others.
Correct.
Okay. As long as we all understand that, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Ms. McLaughlin? Actually, Ms. Mikarsky hasn't spoken, and then I'll have you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay. Well, it seems like we're moving along. I wanted us to move along a little bit, but it was my understanding, if memory serves me right, that last year, there was a budget follow-on to direct the superintendent to bring back some staffing evaluations. And I believe a couple months ago, we were told that would come this summer. So would that be included in that, making this, you know, unnecessary, and we can move on to a vote either way? Dr. Brabran?
You know, Ms. Mikarsky, I, just off the top of my head, if, if you say so, it's, it's the case, but I, I'd have to go back. We'll certainly have everything that we're supposed to have for year end, including if this motion passes that, and any other prior staffing agreements that we've made. I, I just don't recall off the top of my...
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Mikarsky. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished. I'm finished.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Anderson did have a go back in the prior amendment, so I appreciate you accommodating me on this one. I wanted to speak to this because it is concerning the, the way that four certain board members are reading this. The language could not be more clear. We are simply giving him direction to do this analysis. And too often, I hear our board and prior boards talk about the recognition that we need more social workers, we need more psychologists, but we never actually have the contextual data to make informed decisions. This is asking the superintendent to do the assessment, and not just what he's assessing, he thinks the need is in Fairfax County schools, but provide contextual data for the board and the public to understand how far behind are we in the best practice staffing ratios. It's not national standards, it's just best practices based on research. And to the SOQs from the state, I have been lobbying that this school board be a leading voice on getting more funding for school nurses, but because of the way that we only get 22% of funding backed from the state, I've been told that Fairfax County Schools is actually one of the biggest lobbyists against getting the school nurses identified in the SOQ. So that's a longer conversation for another time. We have been really good at partnering with the county, but I really hope this board will support this follow-on motion. It is the right thing to do, and it helps staff understand our expectation for data-driven...
Thank you. Ms. Mikarsky, you have your hand up since we are doing seconds. Are you coming? All right. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So with that, I will call for the vote. I move that the school board direct the superintendent to assess the increased need for school counselors, parent liaison, social workers, psychologists, school nurses, and interpreters in our schools in response to the COVID crisis, as well as to ensure better alignment with best practice ratios. The superintendent will present this assessment and recommended staffing needs at the year-end budget review. All those in favor? So I have Ms. Omesh, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Darrenak Kovacs. Those opposed? Ms. Keys-Gamarra, are you yes or Dr. Anderson? Those abstaining? Ms. Corbett Sanders? The motion carries. I now call on Ms. McLaughlin for a housekeeping motion.
Yes, this is a housekeeping motion for my colleagues. This is simply what we do every year to make sure the superintendent can now take action based on what we have done today with the fiscal year 2021 budget. So I will be reading that for you all, and hope you will vote pro forma. I move that the division superintendent be authorized to take whatever actions are necessary to implement the decisions made by the school board relative to its fiscal year 2021 approved budget, and that all policies and regulations inconsistent, that are consistent with the budgetary motions passed tonight are hereby modified and amended accordingly. And the division superintendent is to be granted authority to make all necessary minor changes and technical modifications to the budget and to salary scales to comply with the intent of the school board with regard to its budget action.
Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, just happy to hand over the reins to the superintendent.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your second?
No, that is okay. Dr. Brabran has it.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to this housekeeping motion? With that, I will call for the vote. I move that the division superintendent be authorized, on the motion that says, I move that this division superintendent be authorized to take whatever actions are necessary to implement the decisions made by the school board relative to fiscal year 2021 approved budget, and that all policies and regulations inconsistent with the budgetary motions passed tonight are hereby modified and amended accordingly. And the division superintendent is to be granted authority to take all necessary minor changes and technical modifications to the budget and to salary scales to comply with the intent of the school board with regard to its budget actions. All those in favor? I have Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Marin, Ms. Omesh... I have Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Marin, Ms. Omeche, Ms. Seismar Kaiser, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I believe those opposed? Those abstaining. That motion carries.
Yay!
So before, before I move on...
Congratulations, everyone.
Before I go to the consent agenda, I do want to thank personally Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson for all of their excellent work on this double-budget year. So thank you very much for all that you have done, and we are forever grateful for it.
Yay!
Sarah, assume. Our consent agenda, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for a consent agenda, lists several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, authorize the division superintendent, the chief operating officer, or the assistant superintendent for facilities and transportation services, any one of whom may act without the others, in consultation with legal counsel for the school system to negotiate, execute, and administer, on behalf of the school board, a lease agreement for the food and nutrition services program for office warehouse space located at 6840 Industrial Road, Springfield, Virginia 22151, including all related documentation within available funds. Item 4.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning April 1, 2020 and ending April 30, 2020. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, thank you very much. I know on behalf of the entire FCPS staff, we appreciate the hard work this has done in an unprecedented budget year. You all have redesigned and recast the budget in really less than two months' time since COVID resulted in closure of our schools. So I thank you for your leadership. By the way, just saying, I believe this is record time in passing a budget session, or an official session of passing the budget. You clocked in at under three hours to do it, and thank you for your work in doing it so well and so efficiently.
Two hours and 23 minutes, Scott.
Yeah, that may be a record. Somebody else will have to go back and check the time markers for the last five years, but maybe...
So let's keep up on the time, guys.
All right, I'm moving on. Real quickly, Superintendent Technology Advisory Council today, its first meeting. We had two presentations, one on devices and the equity of access for internet access, and one on instructional technology, looking at our learning management system, our current one, Blackboard 24/7, but really talking in more detail about our execution of a existing contract with Schoology, Schoology, and work to pilot that in the fall. So we had two great presentations. I want to thank everyone on the advisory council, who spans parents, teachers, students, and major folks from our business community, who have spent their time to support me and ultimately support FCPS. I want to just let you know, community engagement and communication has been a theme today. I continue to want to make sure we're getting the why right and going to multiple platforms. I was at FEA Town Hall last night. I'm at the NAACP Town Hall next week, and really am excited about continuing to have those opportunities to reach out to the community. I want to thank Marty Lee, Alice, the budget team, all the folks who are there and with them, all the leadership team really, for working together to recast the budget and provide support to the board for today. And Kimberly, we missed you in the beginning, but I think you're here today, and I just want to thank you. I know this year is winding down, but just, you've spoken so eloquently the last several weeks. You've done a lot of reach out to the community, and I'm just proud of your leadership as well and everything you've been doing. You are really, you are really setting a standard for your predecessor, your successor. So, thank you, and look forward to seeing everybody soon. Have a wonderful Memorial Day.
Dr. Braybrand, Kimberly's still with us next month.
Oh, good, 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 good. Thank you.
Okay, board committee reports. Next on the agenda is board reports. I call on Ms. Marin for an update from the public engagement committee.
Yes, hi. Yes, we had our public engagement this week. It was our, only our second in this calendar year. We met once in person in February, so it was great to be able to reconvene. And what we realized is, two things bubbled up to the top. One was that this committee could make a more immediate dent in some of our public engagement priorities by looking at how our advisory committees are functioning. And we went through a lot of areas which we would like to propose on making it more streamlined, ensuring that constituent work on these committees is used, and there's just more standard, standardization and processes to make our work go more smoothly. So we did start to frame that up for a forum topic that we will bring to the full board. And in thinking and doing that, we wanted to queue that up for the next public engagement committee, because as the public might not know, starting July 1, the committee structure, the membership can change, because that's when our fiscal year starts and membership gets reconfigured. So we at least want to shore that up for whatever iteration of the next public engagement committee there is. And then we also talked just more generally about some of the challenges in trying to respond and be engaged with the community during the outpouring of, you know, input and requests that we have been getting during COVID. So that was good just to kind of share a bit about that. So next month, we'll continue those two efforts to get things ready for the July public engagement committee.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Next are board matters, and I am going to urge my fellow colleagues that if you could just keep them to very brief tonight, or this afternoon, because we have one additional item we have to deal with. So with that, Dr. Anderson, if we could, can you do it in a minute?
I will do it in a minute, because I'll just keep it all congratulatory. I want to say congratulations to the Mason District Schools that earned the ECO School Awards, Belvedere and Beechtree. And I also am so excited to say that Glasgow Middle School has been honored by Solution Tree as a model professional learning community at work. Glasgow is the only middle school in Virginia and only one of 200 schools around the US and Canada to have earned this distinction. And this is huge. As a principal, this is also an award that I sought, and I realize how much work it takes to earn this. So I am very so excited, because this award is based on schools that are working on very rigorous criteria and are demonstrating a commitment to the PLC concepts and implementation of those concepts for at least three years, which is the focus on learning, a collaborative culture, and a results orientation. And I want to say that Glasgow joins Mason, Crest, and Glen Forest as one of the three schools in our area to have this distinction. So great job and congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Cohen?
Thanks so much. I, again, just want to thank my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand and staff for getting us through what I think has sort of felt like the five stages of grief of the budget process. We all, this is not the budget. I know that anybody wanted, starting out the year, and I do think we made great strides, and in large part, thanks to our community partners for reaching out and letting us know what best will help our students be and feel more successful, and our staff. Wanted to give a huge heartfelt shout-out to the class of 2020. I know many of you were set to graduate before our next board meeting, and I just hope you know that we are thinking of you, we are with you, and we're excited about what's to come for each and every one of you. And we look forward to seeing all of the creative ways that your photo apps and the virtual videos work for you, and I hope that they will bring you joy and some closure to the year. Tonight, to that end, my partner in crime, Ms. Bukarski from the Sully District, and I will be hosting a joint town hall for parents and students, and it'll be at 7:30 tonight. Links are on Twitter and Facebook. If you can't find them, just shoot either one of us an email, and we'll look forward to seeing you then. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Darrenak Kofax?
Thanks. I do, I just want to take the time to send thanks to our budget staff, who has worked so hard to get to where we are today. Mr. Marty Smith, Ms. Lee Verden, Alice Whittington, and their entire team for the hard work that they did. Because as Dr. Braybrand gave us congratulations as pivoting, doing two budgets twice, it's really hard to think you're going from a fully funded budget that will continue to value and provide that moral clarity, how much we value our employees, to where we are today, parsing out small funds, going from 80, what was it, approximately 83 million to under seven, which with the transfer was. So it's been very difficult, but we all got through it. I do also want to congratulate my colleagues, Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson, for your hard work in keeping us all, as we all like to say whenever we're in charge of a product or a program with our board, it's like herding cats. And so you have done an excellent job at doing that. I thank you very much. And as Ms. Cohen pointed out, there would have been many graduates. The last week of May is going, was going to be our, you know, our graduations, which we all love as well. I hope to those of you out there, it is our intent to honor your students. As the parents of a graduate, of two graduates from FCPS, I know how important it is and how heartfelt it is at that shining moment, and we realize it's not going to be quite the same right now. So we thank you for supporting us in our efforts, and know that we love and care about your students and our families, and we wish you all the best, even in these trying times where we can't celebrate the way we would like to.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenak Kofax. Mr. Frisch?
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. It's been a busy couple weeks, and it will continue to be busy. I encourage everybody to follow my social media accounts to stay connected, get on my newsletter list, and sign up for office hours, which are ongoing, more than 40 hours this month alone. So I'll leave it at that, and out of respect for my colleagues' time, won't talk anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
Sorry, just taking a moment. All right, I too want to congratulate the 2020 graduates. Just want to let you know, we are so proud of you, and I was pleased to be able to just kind of put out a little video with my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders, to say that. Wish we could have done something together, but I understand there were some logistical problems. Just congratulations, and thank you guys so much for sticking with us and working so hard. I do want to just reiterate for those who didn't hear me last, the last time we had a meeting, the audit committee has issued its RFP. It has become public. We will have additional information available at the next meeting, which will be next week. But I'm looking forward to moving forward with this special education review. I was also able to do a town hall with our FEA, our Teachers Association. We've had a lot of comments from our staff members, and I just want our staff members to understand and to know that we are really so very grateful that they have bent over backwards in these very difficult times, and we know that we could not have possibly have done this without you. Also look for upcoming office hours. So let's enjoy Memorial Day.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yep, just getting it all turned back on. I want to just not only echo the board's support and concern for our high school seniors and their families who've been impacted by the COVID event, but I also want to reiterate that this board is very committed to working with the superintendent in finding any way possible under public health guidelines to do these live graduations. And I do understand that Loudoun County and Prince William and Arlington, they will have their plans. Loudoun in particular keeps being cited by other parents. If the county allows for us to do live gatherings and live graduations prior to Labor Day, I would fully hope the superintendent will bring those opportunities to us. I also will share with my colleagues some things I've recently learned about safe venues on where this could be feasible, whether it's before or after Labor Day. And the other thing is that I'm very excited that the board will be receiving public communications very soon from our staff about the decision of both the Park Authority and now Fairfax County Public Schools to reopen the stadium track so people can exercise, along with our tennis courts. In the Braddock District alone, I have received many emails. This will be just the first phase, what I hope will very soon see a wider opening of our athletic spaces here in the county, working again, school system in the county, so that people can get outside and have that healthy exercise and student activity. So other than that, thank you again to my colleagues for your hard work and patience as we got through this budget cycle this year.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Marin?
Yes, I just want to reiterate how excited I am that we approved our budget. In fact, my fourth grader was in the room when we voted, so I said, "I'm voting for your schools, for your education." So it really is personal. I also just want to second my excitement about ECO Schools. That's a little bittersweet for me, because although I love that program, our own school at Wolf Trap was in the process of trying to achieve that first pathway. So it's, it's tough that we couldn't finish that this year. But congrats to Flint Hill, Lake Anne, McNair, Terracehead Marshall, and all the other schools. Also want to say how great the high school voter challenge is. I love that. And also, to add on to the good news about parks, as Ms. McLaughlin added, our libraries are going to be offering curtside pickup of holes. So keep on the lookout for that news from the libraries. You're still holding on to your books, but just know that more books are on the way. And I'm trying to hear as much from you as possible. I was happy to join a Forest Edge Elementary Parent Coffee yesterday with Principal Jill Zuber, so please invite me. I will attend. And then my heart goes out to our teachers who are packing up their classrooms now. I know it's a tough time. So finally, of course, congratulations to the seniors. We're thinking of you. You're going to do great things, and all the best to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Omeche?
Yes, thank you. I'll start off by saying thank you to my colleagues for your patience and collaboration during this entire process. It has been quite a five and a half months here together, and I'm happy to see our budget moving forward. I do want to recognize Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Anderson, and thank you, as well as Ms. Mulberg, Ms. Verden, and Dr. Braybrand, who I know have been up late nights to work this out, phone calls, and sending emails, and to see to completion. So as well as Mr. Smith, who has been working on the technology piece during challenging times. So I want to make sure I acknowledge that. And I do believe as we come to better understand one another and each other's priorities as a team, we will do great work with one another, as we have been, and I can certainly attest to anyone watching how appreciative I've been of the contributions of, contributions of each one of my partners on this board and this work. I want to make sure I recognize for the voter registration challenge that I mentioned earlier, that Herndon High School was first place. So congratulations to everyone at Herndon and the seniors there for making sure you have a voice in our elections, as they are virtual now, so be sure to pay attention to that. For our seniors, our class of 2020, I wanted to certainly congratulate all of you and point you to a couple of special things we posted for you on my page. And, you know, I had a stream with Dr. Francis Ivy, our deputy superintendent. I had a stream with Dr. Francis Ivy, our deputy superintendent, to talk a little bit more about what's happening and your representatives from your senior classes had the chance to provide individualized updates for each of your schools. That had encouraged you to check that out. And we had a special senior speaker during our session if you want to tune into that. Finally, Elaine Tolan and I are doing a stream tonight at 7:00 to go over this whole budget process. So if everything during this meeting went over your head, we're going to do our best to break it down and explain what decisions were made and what the process has been. And we will also have Juan Hemmert from the Health Department who will give us the latest on Fairfax County's situation. So look forward, and look forward to seeing you tune in.
Thank you, Ms. Amish. Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. I also want to thank everybody so hard during this budget process, staff, my colleagues, and everybody who reached out, constituents and teachers, our teachers' unions, to have their voices heard. I appreciate the conversations and am always willing to talk about how to best serve our kids. So thank you. I also want to congratulate our seniors. I know it's hard to see that graduation day come on the calendar and our plans to have been altered completely and know that I feel that personally as my son is a graduate this year too, but we are still celebrating you, we are still proud of you, and we are so excited to see where life takes you. So thank you and I look forward to seeing people tonight at my town hall.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you very much. And again, just briefly, very quickly, I want to echo my colleagues in thanking our Budget Chair and Vice Chair, Dr. Anderson and Dr. Anderson, our Chair, Dr. Anderson, our Vice Chair, as well as our tireless budget staff and Dr. Braybrand in working so hard to do two budgets. I never thought in January I would do two budgets in five months, and so I really thank my colleagues for the hard work. And I really thank our public and our community partners, our teachers' associations for reaching out and really having very thoughtful conversations on how we can have a budget that best meets our students' needs given our changed economic forecast. I want to thank everyone who's participated in my town halls that I've had. I've had them weekly. I want to thank my colleagues who've joined me, Chairman Jeff McKay, Dr. Braybrand, for really trying to get work out and to, road out to our community and listen to concerns. I'm going every two weeks now, so my next one will be actually June 2nd because as a mom, June 1st is my son's chorus awards and then June 15th as well. And I'm hoping more of my colleagues will be able to join me on those. I'm happy to attend PTA meetings or town halls, just let me know. Class of 2020, I've written to you in my emails, but I just wanted to say that I've thought for a long time that this generation will be the next greatest generation. I've watched as you've marched, as you've spoken out, as you've been very inclusive of your classmates, and I think the resiliency that you are gaining here, while it does not make up for what you've lost in your celebrations and the things you rightfully deserve, I think going forward you will be a generation that's going to make our world a better place and I couldn't be more proud of you. And I am sorry that this is how your high school career ended, but I think you guys will have an amazing life and I know this experience someday you will look back on as a growing point in your life. I just want to say I'm really excited to hear that we're going to have opportunities for forum topics to bring some of our best thinking to discuss with our colleagues. There was some follow-on motions that I withdrew that I'm looking forward to bringing in other ways around long-term remediation and mitigation for all of our students as well as innovative ways for mental health and social well-being. I know our schools are a place that our academics are important, but so are those connections. So thank you very much and I look forward to talking to you all.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Tolan?
Yes. At first, of course, I echo the thing, the echo, I echo, excuse me, but thank you to everyone that's worked on the budget process. It's been intense and time-consuming. Thank you very much. Shout out to Herndon and McLean High Schools for being on the list for voter registration. Being an active citizen is certainly near and dear to my heart and I so appreciate you for having those new voters ready to go. Just quickly, our Joint Environmental Task Force has gotten information out of our upcoming meetings. We'll be working in small groups and then our next official meeting will be actually July 1st with our entire group with our ideas on moving forward. Just so you know, Mr. Frisch and I did catch up with our sustainability staff in FCPS in the past week and even under the veil of COVID-19, we're moving forward with our work on getting solar panels on our schools and getting our eighth electric buses ready to roll for the fall. So that is all moving forward. Get2Green will be posting more resources out on Blackboard and out on their website for teachers and students. And again, congratulations to our many, many ECO schools and the incredible work that they've been doing. I also wanted to give a shout out to our seniors since all of my graduations will have taken place or would have taken place before our next board meeting. I do want to especially call out our principals and also Dr. Ivy and the Regional Assistant Superintendents. I know they've been working many hours of overtime to try to figure out the best way to have a graduation and a celebration for this class of 2020. And I know that firsthand with many late emails, phone calls, et cetera, early morning, late night. I know the celebration moving forward is not exactly what we had all pictured, but class of 2020, I just want you to know how proud I am of all of your accomplishments and for your aspirations. I've enjoyed seeing the videos and tweets from your high schools about what you're planning to do and what you've been doing and you're going to do great things and you certainly have a lot of unusual memories to end your high school career. Best of luck to each and every one of you. Please sign up for office hours and I will see you tonight with Ms. Amish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. And so before we conclude, I would like to take a moment to first remind everybody what 2020 is. 2020, we always think about it and it's perfect vision. And when I look at this group of kids who are graduating or have graduated from Fairfax County Public Schools this year, I'm looking at a class that is filled with students that are resilient, that care about each other, that pitch in and work with each other and have beaten all odds to keep their spirits high in a year which has been difficult for everybody, but especially for a class that has, you know, you go into your second semester of senior year and you have all sorts of expectations of all the celebrations that are going to happen. And so last night Fairfax County Public Schools, each of our high schools lit up the night with the scoreboards lighting up in celebration of you. That is not nearly enough, but you need to know that you light up air lives because of the wonderful things that you already do and the wonderful things that you will do in the future. And with that, I'm going to close this meeting. This meeting is adjourned and we will go into a closed session.
Yes.
That's what I was about to do, is I was going to call the closed session. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment, appointment, performance, demotion, salaries, resignation, termination, and/or disciplining of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, specifically personnel issues. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Darrenak Kofax, do I have it seconded by Dr. Anderson? All those in favor? We have Dr. Anderson, Ms. Amish, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Frisch, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. That's unanimous. We are now in closed session. I will see you all in the other room.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, quick question. We've been at this now since 1:30, so three and a half hours.
Ms. McLaughlin, what I was about to say is I'm going to suggest that we take a short break because I know people have to go on of no more than 10 minutes and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock. Thank you.